Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Welcome to the September 24, 2024 meeting at the Morro Bay Vets Hall. I will ask the city clerk to establish a quorum.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmember Barton has not joined us. Councilmember Edwards?
Here.
Councilmember Ford is absent tonight. Mayor Protim Landrum?
Here.
And Mayor Wickson?
Here. Councilmember Ford asked me to just announce that she is out of the area this evening and unfortunately will be missing the meeting. She is unable to zoom in. Thank you. With that, I'm going to invite the Girl Scout troop that's here up to the podium to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, girls. We very much appreciate you joining us this evening. With that, I will move to closed session report. Mr. Newmeyer?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. No closed session items tonight to report from today's closed session.
Thank you. Moving on, we will go to the mayor and council members' reports, announcements, and presentations. I'm just going to keep mine brief this evening, imagine that. We really enjoyed, and I want to thank the members and leaders at the Morro Bay Library, the Friends of Morro Bay Library hosted an appreciation breakfast for their volunteers and included the council members to attend. Four of us were able to attend, and it was really a pleasure, and they do great work there. We really are fortunate to have a group that continues to advocate for library services in our community, and their book sales are coming up, and I encourage everyone to support them. And the library just always looks phenomenal when you walk in there, so thank you to all of them. With that, councilmember Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. I would add to that that it is really, it was such a pleasure to watch a group of people not only honoring each other but appreciating just the work that's being done in terms of volunteerism. It was the big word for the morning, and that hits a dear place in my heart and hopefully a conversation that we'll have on a greater scope at some point. I did also want to say that on behalf of the mayor as an alternate, I attended the air pollution control meeting. It's one kind of time I actually get excited to get out and sit in some supervisors' chairs down at county and have great conversation there with others after the meeting and before. But one really interesting item that we have that actually passed along with grant money was the lawn and gardening electrification program. And I have to tell you, and many of you might know this, but I had never heard it put in these terms, but basically, one hour of a leaf blower, so a gas leaf blower running, is equivalent to 1,100 miles of a car. It was really shocking for me personally, and so I, you know, the program is a good one. It's not, you know, canceling anybody out and having to, you know, right now get rid of their, you know, whatever equipment they have now, but they do get, you know, quite a bit of help once they choose to go to electrified equipment. So something to look into for our gardeners and some other commercial agencies like schools as well that use those blowers.
Thank you. Councilmember Barton?
You've already covered this, but I too went to the library meeting, and it was just so great. The air was just lovely with so many people volunteering and people who've done this for years and years. It just was a great, great get-together.
Well, I started the time period from our last meeting with my town hall meeting on homelessness, which was a really, a really great turnout. I was really happy with the turnout. I had one, one of the women on my panel had to cancel at the last minute, and so Wendy, who does, Wendy Blacker, who does the showers at the library, it was also on my panel. She suggested I ask a gentleman that was there, that just happened to be there, that is homeless, he lives in his van. So I asked him if he would come and be on the panel in this woman's place, and he's like, he thought about it for a minute, and he said, okay, let me go change. And so I thought he was going to come back, and he didn't come back right away, right when we're about to start. And there was another woman in the audience that was currently homeless, unsheltered, and so Wendy suggested I ask her to fill in his spot, and I did, and she agreed to do it. And then the guy came back. So I ended up having six people instead of five on my panel. But it was such a diverse, interesting mix of people having those six. Some of them I had a representative from Capslow, a woman from social services in the, at the county, a woman that works in mental health, and then Wendy and the two people that are experiencing homelessness. And we had great questions. It was, it was a real, I think we need to do more of this to really get further, but it was a great start of a conversation. Also, I went to the county's, social services had a meeting on their action, the five-year action plan needs assessment. Is that right, Eileen? Is that how you say it? That wasn't very well-attended, I have to say, so was there going to be another meeting? I can't remember with that. I don't, I don't, just all around the county, they were having meetings. Just closer to you. There you go.
Usually the microphone is already turned on. Okay. So there will be a needs hearing before the Board of Supervisors. I don't have the date for that. In addition, in November, the city level, we will present our draft funding recommendations for the city's share of CDBG.
That's right. That's right. It sounded like there was about $60,000 that was available to us.
Approximately $60,000, yes.
Approximately. And then I went, attended the chamber breakfast on the 18th, when got to hear a panel there with, of which Jen Ford, our council member Ford, was one of the members. That was fun to see. I went to my, the H-SOC meeting at the county where they were making recommendations on HUD funding in our county. There's $4.7 million, and there's 25 projects that have been approved, that have been recommended. I also met with Michael Wamboldt from Visit Morro Bay, and we kind of touched base and checked, checked in on that. I'm trying to get him to let me meet with his board one of these, one of these days. And I think, I think that's it. And the library, the library breakfast, that was a delight. That was a treat. I got to see three former teachers in one, 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 one meeting. It was really cute.
Thank you. And thank you, I did attend your workshop, and it was very well-attended and very informative, so thank you for putting that on.
Thank you.
We have a presentation this evening, and I'm going to ask the Bird Festival representatives to come up, please. Good evening.
Good afternoon, or good evening, I would say. Good evening, everyone. My name is Robbie Revel, and I'm the director of the Morro Bay Bird Festival for 2025. And this is my husband, Bob, who's the program chair. And we would like to thank the council for providing this time to update you all on how our festival has grown and changed since its beginning in 1996. We are new and improved with a beautiful new logo designed by one of our local graphic artists, and we have a slogan, a new slogan this year that really does highlight our community. It says, "Where world-class birding meets small-town hospitality." So we're really, really pushing that across the airwaves as well as here locally. After COVID, after two years of COVID, we began a new 501(c)(3) nonprofit with big plans to grow the festival. So that was three years ago. The first year, our festival arrived the same week as the atmospheric rivers. So that really was a challenge. But birders are a hardy bunch, and we had 600 people who could get here that attended that festival. Last year, we worked hard to attract a diverse group of birders, nature lovers, artists, and nature journalists from around the country as well as from our local community. It was our most successful year ever, and this year, we are expecting 1,000 participants to visit our area for the five-day festival over Martin Luther King Weekend. Now, Bob is going to take you through a glimpse inside those five days and answer the who, what, where, when, and why of the Morro Bay Bird Festival.
Thank you, Robbie. I'm going to have to turn sideways so I can see what I'm talking about. Okay, so what's the big deal with birding? I think the numbers tell the story. There were 96 million Americans in 2023 that identified as either looking at birds, feeding them, or possibly photographing them. Another 43 million admitted that they had taken a trip to go at least a mile to look at a bird. Bird watchers, or we prefer to be called, birders spent $25 billion that year on equipment. That's spotting scopes, telescopes, bird feeders, and going on birding excursions. And this data comes from the U.S. Wildlife and Fish Survey that was done in 2023. So what is the Morro Bay Bird Festival? Robbie mentioned we were started in 1996 by a group of organizations that included the local Chamber of Commerce. And the goal of our festival is to, number one, celebrate the diversity of birds that are in Morro Bay, especially in the wintertime, showcase our beautiful area to visitors from not only around the United States, but hopefully this year, and I'll talk about it in a minute, around the world, and also provide a financial boost to the community. And we are the largest ecotourism event that takes place on the central coast. Down at the bottom of my presentation, Morro Bay is home to over 200 different species of birds in the wintertime. Some of those birds live here, a lot of them come and spend the winter with us, and we're probably one of the top five spots in the nation where you can go to a single place and see that many birds. Today, our planning committee, planning committee consists of about 25 members, and at the festival, we'll have 120 volunteers, and we have 143 leaders. These are leaders and presenters. Everyone is a, I got cracked up on this picture. Everybody is a volunteer. That's important to point out. We have no paid employees except for our accountant, and that's a picture of us opening last year at the grand opening. So what makes our festival so special? Number one, Robbie's already mentioned, we have 263 events in 2025. We have some world-renowned VIPs coming. David Lindo from London, England, hopefully bringing a big crowd. He's known as the Urban Birder. Ken Kaufman, who is like one of the top in the birding world. He's an author, speaker, and a birding guide, is coming from Ohio. And we have Rebecca Heisman coming from Walla Walla, Washington. She is the author of a great book called Flight Pass. So where do we go? We go as far north as the Lighthouse, Piedras Blancas, the Elephant Seal, Riquerry up there. We go all the way east to the Corizo Plain. We go south to Oso Flaco, and we go 30 miles offshore to look at birds out in the ocean that nobody ever sees unless they go out there. What, where, what was this slide? I lost it. Oh, what do we offer? Field trip excursions. Here's some photos from our last year, trips out to Morro Rock. We offer bay cruises, which are pretty cool for people that don't want to go out into the ocean. Bus trips. These particular people are getting ready to go look at owls. And classroom presentations. The gentleman standing there is our featured last year, John Muirlaws. And we also offer kayak and biking trips. And Family Day. Family Day is a Saturday event that's open to families and with children, young children, and this is completely free. It's an all-day event. Kids can do all kinds of projects. And we also, at the festival, in the back room of the community center, have a bazaar. This is also open to the public and features optics companies, nonprofits, local vendors, and artists. Everybody is welcome to come and go through there. Important to note, Robbie's already mentioned this, 1,000 attendees. The other thing that's important about that number, 1,000, based on past attendance, 2/3 of the people who come to our festival live outside the 934 ZIP code. This means they need a place to stay, they need food to eat, and they need transportation. So we bring a lot of people from outside the area, which benefits the lodging and restaurant industry. Financial considerations, our budget this year is $250,000. Most of those fees come from registration, but we also depend on local support. We'll probably end up spending around $225,000 of that, and that will be spent for us to rent facilities and get hotel rooms for our guests, transportation services, foods and services. 85% of those expenses will go directly into the local economy here on the central coast. And then direct-to businesses in Morro Bay coming from our attendees who need lodging, meal, transportation services, and a Morro Bay T-shirt. We estimate that's going to be around $625,000. So that's a total of $850,000 that we think will come back into the local businesses as a result of our festival. Our local sponsors, I'm just going to throw up a few of the different local businesses that are supporting us. We have other sponsors that are also involved, and we want to especially thank the city of Morro Bay and Michael, who is a very, very strong supporter of the Bird Festival. You are invited. We have a grand opening on the Friday that the festival starts on January 18th at noon. We're hoping KSVY will be there. You're all welcome to come and join in and help us celebrate the festival. We also have two welcome receptions on Friday night and Saturday night, 4:30 to 6:00. Come enjoy a glass of wine. You can walk around the bazaar. And lastly, the real VIPs that are coming. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Before we move on, can I ask whoever has the sign on the chairs in the front row to move it, please? There's people standing in the back of the room that don't have anywhere to sit. Thank you. I appreciate that. There's seats up front. Yes.
Can I, can I just ask about the bird, the birders? What, do you have a statistic for the average age? Or I know, I know one that's in their 30s, so I was just wondering if you... Nice. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I love going to the opening night and seeing all the birds that are there on display. It's very cool. With that, we're going to move on to public comment. I do have speaker slips. I have a lot of speaker slips, and we have two items tonight on the agenda that are going to be very informative and halftime. So I would ask any of you who can keep your comments to less than three minutes. I would appreciate it. I have five speaker slips for one event, so I would really appreciate if we can keep it a little shorter. Thank you. I'm going to call up Marilyn Paris first from the Girl Scout troop, and then Mandy Davis, followed by Dan Sedley.
I was thinking I wanted to do this because I remember that most of the kids, when they go to the beach, they, they're like, wait, if I don't want to get wet, I'm going to stay dry. So I thought maybe we could have a beach park? Because mostly, you know, what I explained earlier, so basically, what I'm trying to say is that we should have a beach park because I was thinking, well, you know, when you sometimes usually want to go to the beach, and you think, well, I can go like in the water, build sandcastles, but if you're that one kid that doesn't want to do that and you want to play, but there's no, but there's no like park on the beach, I was thinking maybe we could get some because personally, me and my brother, we love going to the beach, and usually, we don't usually have any like parks that we see, so usually, we have to go to Cayucos because Cayucos has a beach park. And I was thinking, well, maybe we could get a beach park because, I mean, it's just like, I feel like we need one. It would make it a little bit more complete here. So yeah, that's what I was going to explain.
Thank you very much. That's a great idea. Thank you. I will ask everyone else this evening to refrain, reframe from clapping and just wave, please. Thank you.
That is so great. God, you guys did a great job, whoever the parents are. My name is Mandy Davis. I will make this brief. Couple things I want to let you guys know about is there is a forum on November 9th. React Alliance is sponsoring this, and we're going to have four really great speakers. We're going to have Dr. Michael Hogan, Dr., oh, I forget, David Henderson. Bonnie Brady is coming all the way from New York, and we are going to have our councilwoman, Zara Landrum, will be speaking as well. That'll be on November 9th, and that's at the Swallow Creek Ranch in Cayucos. It will be all afternoon, and we will have question-and-answer periods after each person that speaks, as it should be. And then we will have a nice little wine and cheese meet and greet, and Jill Knight will be playing for our entertainment. The other thing I want to let everybody know is React Alliance has been in existence for exactly one year now. Our next meeting is on October 2nd. It is our one-year birthday party, and we will have some really great speakers. So that is at, oh, golly, what is, I always forget the name of the place. It's at the Benedict, and that is at 6 o'clock. So once again, these are both React Alliance-sponsored activities, and thanks a lot for coming out. Bye.
Next up will be Norm Williams and Jim Gross.
Hello, my name is Dan Sedley. Good evening, council, community. I want to talk tonight about the Morro Bay Battery Plant. Vista, the current owner of the Stacks Power Plant, has applied to build a battery plant on the property of the current power plant property. Current zoning does not allow for the construction of this battery plant at the site proposed, which is adjacent to the Embarcadero and in close proximity to Morro Bay High School and the bay. Advertisements by the proposed battery plant company Vista claim clean and renewable energy. The following points debunk that claim. All types of batteries are constructed of rare minerals from the earth. These batteries, lithium ion, cobalt, et cetera, contain toxic and poisonous materials, no different than batteries left in a flashlight too, too, too long. They eat through the battery metal casing. The rare earth minerals are primarily mined in third-world countries, often using child labor and forced labor. A previous city council required that newly constructed sewer plant be built far away from the previous site due to concerns for rising ocean levels. Yet now, it is proposed to build the battery plant close to the ocean. So if there was a tsunami or rising ocean levels, the toxic materials would be washed into the estuary into human populations such as tourists. The results would be catastrophic to humans, open ocean life, the estuary, and even if there was an evacuation. The rare earth minerals wear out over periods of time. Therefore, these batteries must be recycled when possible or buried into biohazard landfills. Lithium ion and other batteries are known to have caught fire and to cause explosions, sending persons, sending poisons and toxins into the atmosphere, ocean, and into the ground, causing severe illness and fatalities to humans, animals, and plant life, which in turn poisons our food sources. The above points disprove Vista's claim of clean and renewable energy, but instead heightens the likelihood that our current claimed community, that Morro Bay is presently to become poisoned instead. In order to keep Morro Bay clean and healthy, I encourage voters to vote yes on initiative A24, which would keep this poisonous and unhealthy battery plant out of Morro Bay. Thank you.
Please no clapping. Please wave. We just don't want people clapping and booing, and we'd like to give everybody an equal opportunity up here.
Madam Mayor and city council members, my name is Norm Williams. I'm a 20-year resident of Morro Bay, and I too am going to talk a little bit about the best. Moss landing, Otay Mesa, Escondido, school evacuations, shelter in place. When does the irrational decision-making by government officials that has led to these events ever stop? Friends, I can tell you, they can stop right here in Morro Bay, our quaint little fishing village. The potential toll on residents' safety and natural habitats is finally registering with politicians from various jurisdictions throughout the country and our state, their finally questioning the merits of locating best facilities near populated areas and ecologically sensitive natural habits. They are now confronting the fact that the use of large lithium battery storage facilities is still an evolving science, with the impact of potential hazards still not clear. Whether it's San Diego County, Slow County, and finally, believe it or not, our state legislature, they now realize it's not a question of supporting best facilities and green energy, but rather where you locate these facilities. It's simply about location, location, location. Mayor and city council, you've acted in good faith following the procedures outlined in the memo of understanding with respect to the best project adopted by a previous city council. However, as noted in responses to the draft EIR, Environmental Impact Report, by scientists and the staff of the California Coastal Commission, there are serious ecological and safety issues with respect to the location of the proposed project. When the final vote for approval of this project comes before you, I urge you to act in good faith on behalf of the citizens of Morro Bay and vote to reject it. Thank you for your dedication and your time.
Following Jim Gross will be Jeff Heller and Linda Winters.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, Jim Gross, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the no-on-24 campaign, and the purpose is not to speak to the merits of it, but to comment on some concerns that we've heard in the community about where the no side is receiving its financial support. And we thought it prudent, and in the best interest of public disclosure, to explain where, in fact, we are getting it. Now, obviously, we are getting a lot of support from the community itself. However, we have been contacted by numerous environmental organizations throughout the country who have asked to provide support to our campaign. The first thing that we made... The first thing that we made clear to these organizations is that the no on 24 campaign is not taking a position on the battery plant. We are taking a position on the measure itself and the concerns we have about the measure. With that, however, and with their understanding that we are running our own campaign and that we are not in fact interested in supporting Vistra or supporting other organizations that are specifically advocating for these plants, to take the support they give us, to get out the message about the arguments, the misrepresentations, however one might want to characterize it, with respect to those supporting A24. So you will see on our public disclosures that are filed with the California Secretary of State that in fact we are receiving support from many environmental organizations. We also have the support, not financial, but the endorsement of the Sierra Club, surf riders, and other organizations who are very concerned about how this campaign is laying out the arguments. So with that, I just wanted to make clear that we in fact will receive support from outside the community, no corporate support, it is money from environmental organizations, and we decide how to run our campaign. I don't think that that probably raises any specific questions with the council, but we saw it as an opportunity to explain it. I know some of the council members have positions about A24 and at least one council member has given money to the yes side of A24. So everybody is weighing in to make sure that they get their message heard. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mayor Wicksum, I'd like to thank you for agendizing this informational meeting on these two topics that are both so controversial and so very complicated. And Manager Kimball as well, appreciate your effort. This is super important, you can tell from the energy in the crowd, and there are a lot of strong feelings pro and con. I read the agenda and I want to thank you as well, Director Arlen, for outlining these issues in a way that I found fairly comprehensible. I've been lost, like many people, in all the details, but the agenda, the way it's written, is extremely helpful to me and I'm sure other people here as well. And our attorney, I hope weighed in on the agenda as well. I'd like to say a couple of things to the audience, just, we have a lot of pros and cons here and I think the public comment is great to express those. Frankly, I think this is an opportunity to ask questions that you don't know the answer to. This is an opportunity to learn, to understand, and ask questions that you don't know the answer to. There'll be other meetings where you can talk about your opinion when votes are coming up. This is informational and a golden opportunity for people to do that. With that, have a great meeting. Thank you all.
After Linda, I have Michael Wambach, Sharice Hanson, Kendall Welsh.
Good evening, mayor, council, staff, the chiefs. My name is Linda Winters, a 30-year resident in the same mobile home park here in Morro Bay. I'm here tonight to first give you some numbers. First one, 7,980. Second number is 45. I was recently given an assignment to promote voter registration and I was planning on this little speech to give to folks and it was, and it went like this. I clearly see that you have, from all of your banners and flags, that you are promoting your particular candidate and I respect your choice. And I hope you respect mine as well. Well, that didn't really work very good. So I moved on to another situation and there was a person who had banners and flags and the candidate of their choice and I said, gee, that's good to see that you're a registered voter. This is what I'm talking about, voter registration. And that person responded, oh, I'm not a registered voter. I don't ever register because that means they can get me for jury duty. I stated, you know, they have other means to get you for jury duty. But it really intrigued me as far as his excuse to me. I asked that person why they were not registered to vote and that response was, oh, votes don't count anyhow. So I said, you know, there was an election here in Morro Bay that was decided by 12 votes and you could have made that deciding vote, but you didn't vote. If you don't register to vote, you don't have a voice, so nobody will listen to you anyhow. Your voice is through voting. So I went on my merry way, asking every single person that I knew to find a buddy who isn't registered and encourage them to register to vote regardless of what that person has said. Here's a good news as far as Morro Bay is concerned. Page two is being elusive. So once again, I've asked, I'm sure you've guessed, the significance of 7,980. That's the number of registered voters here in Morro Bay. Almost 80% of our population. That's a wild factor. And the other number is 45. That's how many more days until there is after the election. I will see each and every one of you at the next meeting, which I believe is October 8th, and by all means, get out there, get registered, and use your voice to vote. Thank you very much.
Good evening, mayor and council. Michael Wambach, Executive Director for Visit Morro Bay. Wonderful to be here tonight. I'm excited here to announce our newest event in Morro Bay, our Morro Bay Maritime Festival, our five-day festival taking place on October 9th through the 13th. This festival has come together through a collaboration of the Maritime Museum, Yacht Club, Chamber of Commerce, ourselves at Visit Morro Bay, and a number of others. We really launched this idea about three years ago when the Maritime Museum launched their Family Fun Day and we also lost our Harbor Festival during COVID. We've worked very hard bringing events back to Morro Bay out of the COVID period. I do want to give an applause to our Bird Festival. Amazing job that they've done. This festival for us is really a celebration and showcase of our maritime spirit here in Morro Bay to really showcase what we have to offer on our waterfront and beyond. On the five-day festival, we have the kickoff at the Embarcadero After Dark hosted by the Harbor Walk-In. On Thursday night, we'll have Rock the Waterfront at the Yacht Club hosted by the Maritime Museum. On Friday 11th, a free concert at Tidlands, launch of the Zongo All Stars, so I hope we all see you there. And then Saturday has a full line of schedule with the Maritime Family Fun Event, our Yacht Club Day Sailors, and in the evening time, a special showing at the Bay Theater of Treasure Island Movie Night. We ask all participants, those pirates that are among us, to join us there. We will have pirates in the audience who'll come in and join us there. And then on Sunday, we'll kick off and end the festival with the Chris Lockwood Regatta. Hope to see you there. The collaboration with our local organizations to bring this to fruition has been amazing over the last couple of years and we look forward to celebrating Morro Bay's maritime spirit. Thank you.
I am Sharice Hanson, mayor. And hello, Frances and others watching and viewing for later. In chamber news, I'm the chair as well as I'm a business, local business owner. In chamber news, our new CEO is getting her bearings, cleaning house, and meeting with city staff, council, and trying to meet as many business owners in her first month. We also have our Breakfast on the Bay. Our last one was well-attended. Thank you, those of you that joined. And we would love to see more business and community members at Breakfast on the Bay. It's the third Wednesday of every month. It starts at 7:30 at the Community Center. And yes, breakfast will be served. Tonight, I have the pleasure of announcing a chamber event being held at my brand-new property, Harbor Walk Plaza. It is the Chamber Mixer for the month of October. This is also the kickoff that Michael mentioned of the Maritime Festival. It will be a grand opening event that I've invented my neighbors to partake in, Daisy's Coffee Shop, Lost Isle Tours, Absolution Cellars. We are celebrating the opening of Harbor Walk Inn, Harbor Walk Convenience, Morro Bay Boat Rentals, Umi Seafood and Grill, and the reopening of Under the Sea Gallery going into their 26th year at this address. We will have our artists who contributed to the play area, hotel decor, and window dressings. All are invited and we would love to see our community down on the Embarcadero. Thank you, everyone.
Following Kendall is Paul Irving and Judy Salamaka.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm Kendall Welsh, the president of the Morro Bay Maritime Museum. The Maritime Museum is not only a cultural attraction for Morro Bay, but also provides an entertaining facility for acquiring maritime knowledge and history. We're an all-volunteer organization and as well, we do not charge an entrance fee. We thrive on the donations of our members and our many visitors to the museum. We have two events as part of the Morro Bay Maritime Festival. Our first is our third annual fundraiser, Rock the Waterfront, and it's an evening event at the Morro Bay Yacht Club on October 10th from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. Orderves are catered by Chablis Catering and the Spanky Paul Band will be rocking the waterfront. It's a no-host bar and a silent auction. All proceeds from this event go to our daily expenses and keep our museum building open. Tickets are $100 for members, $115 for non-members. Our second event is free. It's the Family Fun Day at the museum. It's Saturday, October 12th from 10:00 to 4:00. We ask many other local nonprofits and other maritime-interested organizations to come and provide an activity for kids and their families to enjoy. From gutter boat racing, sandcastle building, to fish prints and more, come and join us. And Paul Irving isn't going to be here tonight, so I'll say something quickly about his Friday night event is the kickoff party for the Zongo Yachting Cup. So the Zongo All Stars will be playing a free concert at Tidlands Park, food by La Catrina. The Chablis Saloon will be on the dock. The Yachting Cup itself takes off about 10:00 a.m. from Morro Bay. They race to Port San Luis and yachts from all over the state of California and farther north have been invited to participate. Then Saturday morning, along with our Family Day at the museum, the Yacht Club is having a day sailor race off the South Teapier. It's the Harbor Cup and it used to be always with the Harbor Festival, but this year, they'll be sailing up in the front of the bay so everyone can see them. And then, of course, Sunday is the Chris Lockwood, our juniors, sailing race, annual race. So come and join us. Thank you.
Judy Salamaka, I've been a resident here now, I think for almost 25 years, and involved in a lot of activities, but excited, very excited that Maritime Month has been officially dedicated several years ago by this council and it continues to build in momentum. I specifically wanted to invite everybody to the movie that is going to be at the Bay Theater that Michael mentioned. And not only is it the 1934 award-winning Treasure Island that will stay on the big screen, but as Michael also mentioned, we do have professional pirates as well as our own local pirates that are coming to Morro Bay and that will be there. And many of the downtown already, many of the merchants and facilities, businesses in downtown have donated some treasure for the booty treasure chests that we will be giving away. So we check it out, come out, and enjoy the festival in October. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think it's going to be a busy weekend. Public comment is open. I have no more speaker slips. Please be reminded it's for items not on the agenda.
Yes. I felt obligated just to have a shout-out to the Public Works Department. Yesterday, I was walking along Kern Street and I saw three potholes. I took a picture of the potholes. I downloaded it on the city website, request service. Sure enough, an hour and a half later, Martin came by in the truck, took a look at it, and this morning, when I walked to the golf course, it was fixed. One day service. And I don't know if everyone's aware of it. This is the second time I've done this, but it works. Take a picture of a pothole, put a service request in, and it will be fixed. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. Richard Sadowski, citizen of Morro Bay. I would just like to echo what Jeff Heller said about opening up the dialogue for this conversation. About 10 years ago, I remember sitting down with the late Fred Collins from the Northern Shumash Tribal Council and discussing the offshore wind farm proposal when the DOD was still, didn't give approval to it. And now it's opened up and I think that having a discussion on how this can affect the community for the future and also the opportunities that it might pose. One of the things that I am most concerned about is the 3030 Plan that California has with reducing the carbon dioxide emissions statewide. And it was pretty encouraging with the last development that the Department of Water Resources has agreed to purchase that energy. And that's why we need that dialogue, to understand how solar and wind energy can complement each other in reducing that and getting that target of 3030. But once again, thank you for that, opening that up.
Good evening, Karen Aguilar, resident of Morro Bay. I just want to thank the Morro Bay Bird Festival for their presentation tonight because they shared with us, gave us some light on the fact that it's a very lucrative nonprofit for the city of Morro Bay and also to shed light on the migratory birds that come to our city every winter. And I reflect on the wind farm proposal because not only are our mammals in the ocean, migratory mammals being affected, which evidenced from back east and also in Scotland, but the birds. We never talk about the birds. Hundreds of thousands of birds per year, especially the predatory birds, are killed. And we need to think about that because they can't vote. They can't come up here and talk. And yet, I think there was one explanation that I heard that, well, they'll just go around. Well, these wind blades are going to be going at the speed of sound, so I don't know how they're not going to get sucked into this vortex. So anyway, I'm really appreciative of what the Bird Festival shared with us because we are a tourist town and that is a great way to bring people into our town, to celebrate our town with us. And industrializing our town just doesn't seem to go hand-in-hand with that. So I just want to bring that as food for thought for people to kind of consider. Thank you.
Couple of Saturdays ago, I had to spend the whole day with Jolly 96, the Blackhawk helicopter rattling my windows. Therefore, in honor of my mom's favorite Bruce Coburn song, If I Had a Rocket Launcher, I'd like to share a few quotes from an October 1989 article in the Marine Corps Gazette titled, "The Changing Face of War Into the Fourth Generation." "One of the goals is collapsing the enemy internally rather than physically destroying him. Targets will include things such as the population's support for war and the enemy's culture. The distinction between war and peace will be blurred to the vanishing point. The distinction between civilian and military may disappear. Actions will occur concurrently through all participants' depth, including their society as a cultural, not just a physical entity. Targets may be more in the civilian than the military sector. The tactical and strategic level will blend as the opponent's political infrastructure and civilian society become battlefield targets. It will be critically important to isolate the enemy from one's own..." It will be critically important to isolate the enemy from one's own homeland because a small number of people will be able to render great damage in a very short time. Psychological operations may become the dominant operational and strategic weapon in the form of media, information, intervention. Fourth-generation adversaries will be adept at manipulating the media to alter domestic and world opinion to the point where skillful use of psychological operations will sometimes preclude the commitment of combat forces. A major target will be the enemy population's support of its government and the war. Television news may become a more powerful operational weapon than armored divisions. Destruction or disruption of vital industrial capacities, political infrastructure, and social fabric, coupled with sudden shifts in the balance of power and concomitant emotions, could easily lead to escalation to nuclear weapons." With war no longer being about territory, no longer just a matter of whose face is on our coinage, winning is no longer just about negating the opposition's ability to wage war. Now, in order to survive, an enemy must be erased completely. The only way to win is genocide. I cannot stand the swell of rage that I feel any time I lay eyes on an instrument of mass murder. If the military types want to live by the gun, they can do so away from my town so that when they die by the gun, they will not take me and my neighbors with them."
Anyone else for public comment on items not on the agenda?
Hello, everybody. My name is Cindy Maulman and I'm from Cayuga. I've lived there about 50 years now. And questions keep coming into my mind and a fellow said this is a good time to ask them. I'm just wondering, who is going to benefit from these two projects? Are the residents of the Central Coast going to benefit? Are we going to get the electricity from it? Or is it Vestra that's going to benefit from it and then build their project and move on, like many of them do? Are we ready to take the power that these projects or that the wind farm will generate? Is our infrastructure ready to take this power? I don't know. There's a lot of questions out there about these two projects and I'm not quite sure. No, I think I am quite sure that the benefit will not outweigh the cost to the people that live here and enjoy the Central Coast. Thank you very much.
Anyone else for items not on the agenda? AGP, are there any raised hands in the queue?
There are no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else going, going? Come on up. Items not on the agenda?
Hello, I'm Cynthia Hathaway. I reside here in Morro Bay. I'm just concerned about accommodations because with more projects and more people needed to fund these projects, I mean, to come and work with these projects, there isn't even housing for the people who live here. That's a pretty big concern. It's very difficult to find housing here.
Thank you. If there's no other public comment, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to council. Thank you, everyone, for all your comments. Looking forward to the events at the Maritime Museum. I just have one response and did a very quick survey. Mr. Williams, I'm not sure where you got your information from, but none of the four of us have donated to a yes or no on a 21 campaign. And that's these four council members. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Gross. Mr. -- yes, thank you. Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Williams, Mr. Gross. Thank you. My apologies, Mr. Gross. None of us donated to either of those campaigns. Thank you. My apologies. We're going to -- thank you. We're going to go to the consent agenda, but before we do that, I'm going to let the audience know. We're moving 9A and 9B. 9B will be first tonight. 9A will be second. We will be doing the offshore wind first and then the Vestra battery storage second. With that, I'm going to move to the consent agenda. Open public comment on items on the consent agenda. Anyone for items on the consent agenda? I have no speaker slips. No? AGP, are there any raised hands in the queue?
There are no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you. With that, I will bring it back to council. I'm going to close public comment on the consent agenda and ask, "Council, is there anything to pull this evening?" With that, I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda and ask for a second.
I'll second that.
Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. It's early, so we're going to wait and do this first item and then we'll take a break after that. So we will start with our offshore wind sub-recip -- reciproc -- yeah. Agreement with San Luis Obispo County. And I will turn it over to the city manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is presented before the city council tonight. It's for your possible approval of a sub-recipian agreement with the county of San Luis Obispo. And the county had received a $1 million state year mark in 2021 and the purpose of the funding is to conduct an operation and maintenance of waterfront infrastructure facility study related to the offshore wind, potential offshore wind projects. The county had decided to use portion of the year mark fund to conduct the study and then the rest of the year mark fund to share between three agencies, City of Morro Bay, Port San Luis, and Cal Poly. As a result, we are looking, the city of Morro Bay is looking at about just over $127,000 to use, to support the study, to coordinate with the consultant for the study and community outreach. Staff recommendation is to approve, for city council to approve the sub-recipian agreement. Before I move on, I do want to clarify that by us representing council to approve this agreement, it doesn't mean that city council needs to take a position whether you support offshore wind development or not. There is distinction between considering a grant funding and supporting the potential project. No, I'm good.
Thank you. Questions?
I don't have any questions right now.
Councilmember Barton? Councilmember Edwards? Go ahead. No, go ahead.
These are kind of just basic questions that I got from reading parts of the report. One of the questions that I had, just so that I have clarification, was the city of Morro Bay, Port San Luis, and Cal Poly are working on joint communication plan. I was just wondering what specifically that was.
That is actually another partnership project that these agencies are working on together. And that's, as I understand, the county has $750,000, another part of a grant that they want, and county is going to be the lead for a county-wide communication education initiative.
And then I guess from that, what would be the next steps from here if we approve this tonight?
Once the agreement is signed and all the sub-recipian agreement, all three are signed, and then the county is the lead for the project, then county will commission the study and all of us will be involved in the study and will coordinate with the consultant and then conduct outreach as necessary.
Appreciate that, especially the outreach portion. Thank you.
Yes, please.
And can you speak to how we can ensure, how we're to ensure that this isn't overlap of the prior study that we had paid for?
This was, thank you, Mayor Proton. This was brought before the, the committee, or rather, the staff discussion before. And we, it's a different kind of study. And of course, the prior study information will be utilized to incorporate it into the new study. I have, I also wanted to say that we, if, portion of the grant would give us a chance to conduct outreach and to conduct additional study if necessary, additional review, I should say. And that would take some time. So to verify community's concern that no information was repeated, we would have to verify that. And we had made it clear with the county when we discussed this entire project that we wanted, we do not want to spend the money that has already been spent on the prior study.
Well, and because it's the same company, Mount MacDonald, that's doing this study, as did the prior one, they should be aware of not overlapping. And if our study includes our own outreach, is that reported to the rest of the outreach that you were just talking about with, that councilmember Edwards was asking about?
That's a separate project, the other one, the $750,000. It's a different project. We are, just, that one has just, we just started, we just started communication with the county and the other agencies. So this one, if we do actual outreach programs, we will be able to use the fund to pay for.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We have an opportunity this evening. Supervisor Gibson's joined us and he is on the Committee for the Offshore Wind for the County, where our funding is coming from. Thank you, Supervisor Gibson.
Thank you very much, Your Honor, and members of the council. It's a great pleasure to be with you this evening and I'm really glad to see this item on your agenda. Your staff and your staff report lay out the background, the details of this very well. I can speak to councilmember Landrum's question on scope of work. I know the county staff and city staff worked very closely on defining the scope of work of that part of the study that you referred to. And I do understand we have Rebecca Campbell from our administrative office on the Zoom call here, again, if there was any detailed questions. I'm really happy that the way this worked out, there was a fund left over to provide this sub-recipian agreement, money that goes directly to you. Because I know that you and your residents have questions about what are the possibilities? What would be the potential impacts to your port? And how that would interact with other actions going on at Port San Luis? And so this cooperation between your city, the Port San Luis Harbor District, and Cal Poly is really central to getting our regional focus sharpened as we go forward. So what I wanted you to know is that the county stands by to be helpful. If I personally can be of any assistance to you all, please don't hesitate to reach out. I know Ms. Campbell is similarly interested in seeing that your questions get answered and this becomes something that we can really use to make good decisions going forward. So I'm pleased to be here for the duration of this item. I'm happy to answer questions if they come up now or later.
Thank you, Supervisor Gibson. Yes, we appreciate that you're available for questions and--
And phone call, and phone calls, too.
And phone calls. We know how to get your number.
Yeah, there we go.
This is a collaboration and this will provide an opportunity of doing a more in-depth research for our community-specific that can look more into the environmental balance and how that factors in with offshore wind and the potential of if it fits or if it doesn't. So this is an opportunity we haven't had yet, so we appreciate the county's willingness to include us in this funding and work with our staff. So thank you for that.
My pleasure.
Appreciate it. And on a side note, not to digress, thank you again for your help with the library. We appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Happy to help.
Does anyone have any questions for Supervisor Gibson until we go to public comment? No, thank you, Bruce. I have speaker slips this evening. I will start with the speaker slips. I will ask you all to be reminded of what the agenda item is and direct your comments and questions to the agenda item, please. Sherri Hafer, followed by Ted Key, followed by Joe Solano. Hi, Sherri.
Hi, good evening. I'm Sherri Hafer. I'm involved with the commercial fishing community heavily since I've been married to one for 37 years. And he's the president of the Morro Bay Fishing Organization, Tom Hafer. And we've been involved with offshore wind coming since 2015. So I understand that you're being bombarded from the feds, state, and the offshore wind industry to use Morro Bay harbor and beaches. However, I think as representatives of the Morro Bay citizens, your actions should be reflection of what the majority of the people that work and live here want, not what they want. Do you think the fishermen want offshore wind site surveys, construction and operations lowering their catches, causing hazards, and other harmful impacts to the ocean? Do you think the sailors and fisheries want to worry about giant vessels trafficking in and out of the harbor, obstructing free navigation and utilizing our limited harbor space? Do you think swimmers, surfers, dog walkers, and other beachgoers want to see beaches between Morro Bay and Cayugas dug up with multiple dangerous high-voltage export cables? Do you think the birders want to see dead birds on their echo tours? Do you think the tourists and locals want, in their viewshed, giant red-painted industrial vessels in and out of our harbor and in the ocean 24/7? Large supply trucks going up and down Beach Street? Oil storage in the Embarcadero or somewhere near the harbor? Helicopters flying around? Huge yellow-painted oil-rig-looking substations on the coast? And 300, 1,000-foot-tall wind turbines visible on a clear day 40 miles away along our beautiful Big Sur coastline? Do you think the people that live here will like to see their utility bills triple and possibly quadruple as they have done in the U.K.? Offshore wind energy is the most expensive form of energy. It makes no economical or environmental sense. The only benefactors are billionaire foreign oil companies that own the wind companies and large global investment firms whose only concern is their bottom line. They don't care about Morro Bay. The fishermen have already experienced this firsthand. The wind companies have gone forward since April using high-decibel site surveys over 160,000 acres, working 24/7, nonstop, without the biological and acoustic monitoring or mitigation the fishermen recommended to protect the ocean and protect their livelihoods. All for what? To get off fossil fuels? Wind energy is 35% reliable. We will be more dependent on fossil fuel peaker plants and will produce less electricity overall, making electrification even more difficult. BOM even says in their final EIR that offshore wind will have no impact on global warming. So it's all not worth it. They are all carpet beggars selling a fake remedy at a huge cost for environment and our economy.
Good evening. Ted Key from Cambria. I now understand your parking lot a little better, so I won't have that problem next time. I want to acknowledge the bird people. I promise to you, I will do everything in my power to prevent 300 stadium-sized fans from knocking birds out of the sky wholesale. They stopped that thing in Germany when they were knocking down golden eagles left and right. right, but I digress. The sole sourcing of this money is worrisome. I mentioned that to the Board of Supervisors the other day, but they've made their decisions, and now you have to make yours. Apparently Morro Bay is not being considered as a construction services center, but I will let the others speak to the best mess later tonight. I just want to say this, that in terms of the outreach, I think it's absolutely imperative that all of the constituencies are mailed the opportunity to, mailed the information on when the town halls, town halls are going to be, when they're going to be. And that in those town halls, both sides of this issue get to speak at the same time. So people don't have to go to one or the other and get a stilted view of this or of that. I think it's very important that these things go head-to-head at that meeting, so that people don't have to come to a million different meetings. Again, I'm from Cambria, and what I can tell you is this. I have now spoken to easily hundreds of people up in Cambria. And the Cambrians that I've spoke, I've spoke to maybe three people that are in favor of this offshore thing. All of them absolutely real, even the idea of placing Moonstone Beach in the same peril as in Nantucket, when twice blade failures led to beach shutdowns for weeks. We are in the direct line of the detritus from destroyed blades or turbine explosions, which will happen, given the number of machines. It's going to happen. And we up in Cambria don't want it. And if we are the Waterloo for this madness, so be it.
I have one more speaker slip. It will be Mandy Davis.
Yes, my name's Joel Solano. I'm a resident in the harbor. I live aboard my yacht. The last thing that Morro Bay needs is these wind turbines out in our, out in our ocean. The industrialization of our ocean is not the, the way to save the planet. Saving the planet does not mean destroy the ocean. And I do not see, from what little I know of the wind industry, how these are even remotely considered as green. They use huge amounts of oil. They leak huge amounts of oil. We go to the beach now, we have natural tar balls out there. We go to the beach when these windmills come in, or these wind turbines come in, we're going to have oil slicks out there. We're going to have dead birds out there. We're going to have dead seals, dead whales, dead dolphins. This morning was a beautiful day to live in Morro Bay. This morning was a great day to be on the beach. I started this morning surfing over by the rock. We had an otter in our lineup with us. Really neat, really fun to have. We went to the beach later. We went to Toro Creek, walked our dogs on the beach. My understanding is that's one of the places they want to bring the wind energy ashore. We had dolphins right off the breakers. We had tumpbacks a little further out. All of these go away when we start putting in these wind turbines. This is a horrible thing to do for our community. This is a horrible thing to do for a community that, that depends on tourist dollars. How many people do you know that vacation in Moss Landing? There's nobody vacationing in Moss Landing. What makes you think that they're going to want to continue to come to, to our beautiful community and enjoy what we all enjoy when we industrialize our ocean? When we have huge wind turbines out there leaking oil, putting plastics into the, the environment? The forward edge on these, these blades, they deteriorate. And as they deteriorate, that, what the, the stuff they're made on, the plastic, the, it's on the fiberglass, thank you, that's on the outside edge of those, falls into the ocean. We already have a problem with microplastics in the ocean and our fish eating those. I know, I don't want to eat fiberglass from the windmill. I know that I don't want to go to the beach and turn my feet up with fiberglass from the windmill. I know that I don't want to take my dogs to the beach and have them in danger from the fiberglass, as well as the oil and everything else that's going to come with these. There's nothing green about this. To sell this as green energy is a lie. They're, we're going, they use oil. They, there's no way to recycle these things. And the ships that are going to be required to service these are not green.
Public comment is open after Mandy. I have no more speaker slips. As long as it's on this agenda item.
Agenda, and my concern about the study in general, my skepticism, is that it's not a neutral party, a Mount MacDonald, that is running the fundamental, you know, the basis of this research and the study. And that, I think, will bring up a lot of, kind of a distrust, because it's not really a local, a, a local business. And so I'm glad that we've got some appropriations for the town of Morro Bay to do our own study, but in, in general, I, I definitely oppose. Thank you.
Everybody looks so serious. Mandy Davis with React Alliance. I never quite know what I'm going to say when I get up here, so I'm still deciding. But the one thing I do want to say is, I'm all for you guys getting money, especially for the waterfront and for the city. I'm not particularly fond of the fact that you're getting money for an absurdity, to do another, another, another one of these studies. It's absolutely unnecessary. We know that Morro Bay is not appropriate for industrialization. I mean, it's just a given. So I'm going to change tack here. We are celebrating otters today. I just got off the water. I work as a guide, and I'd like to describe my day. I went out there with folks from India, and I got a chance to go out in our estuary. And I do this almost on a daily basis. I am fortunate to know how special this place is and how worthy of protection it is. But they were blown away. We went back and we saw otter moms, and we saw all of the great local birds that don't have to migrate here, and they don't have to deal with the potential of wind farms, no, wind turbines, sorry about that. And we saw bait balls, and we saw just an incredible array. Why, in God's green earth, would we want to jeopardize that? No, this is not about, as Don Ortiz Legg says, "We are afraid of change." We're not afraid of change. But we, what we are afraid of is changing something that is so unique and is so much a part of our hearts and souls, that we would destroy it in the name of industrialization of our coast. It makes no sense. And especially if you look at the fact that that particular energy form is not going to have any kind of beneficial effect on climate change or global warming. And I challenge Don Ortiz Legg to look at us and say that we are not doing this for the right reasons. We are protecting our homes. We are not protecting our political stance. We are not protecting a small group of people that are looking to make money on this. We are protecting what is important to us. We are protecting our economy. We are protecting our lifestyles. We are protecting our home.
I got one speaker slip slid in, David, and after that, please come on up. No more speaker slips. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. David Yo, Morro Bay. Thank you for everything. You guys are doing a great job. I was at the supervisors' meeting this week or two ago, and I was, what Mandy was saying, but Ms. Ortega Legg, whatever her name is, commented, I, I'd mentioned, "I'd rather be kayaking. I would rather be there out doing something than being here talking to you." And at the end of the, the session, she made some comment about, "Oh, well, you know, retired people, too bad." It was really an insult to everybody in this room, all of us that are retired, who have moved here to this gem, this little gem of San Luis Obispo County. And I don't know what the rest voted like that, except for our dear Deborah. She was, she took 15 minutes to talk the whole thing down, to say what a, what a mess that is, and how she's on our side to shut this business down. The other four were real happy at going, "Yes, yes, yes, we want whatever it is. So whatever they have to offer us down here is not going to be in our benefit. And I don't really want to be here talking to you guys. I don't want to be doing this. I don't like doing this. I really don't, and I don't want to waste your time." But they're wasting our time, and they're going to kill us off. They're going to wipe us out. And whatever little promises they make are all lies. They're lying to us, and they're going to take what they can take. And as was said, there are going to be these big pieces of equipment. There's not going to be traffic going to and from, because we got little streets. We got little streets, and they're going to be bringing big industrial equipment through. It's really an insult to us. They're going to kill us. And I'm, I'm really sorry that I have to be here and do this. I'd rather be kayaking. Anyway, thank you.
Hello, Judy Setting, 57-year resident of Morro Bay. I, listening to everybody and visualizing what they're talking about, I had a flashback to 1968, sitting in one of the View classrooms at Morro Bay High School, watching an oil tanker go by, come hidden from the rock and heading north to the Chevron Pier. And I thought, "Wow, it looks really cool," you know? And then, a few days later, being on the beach surfing and stepping in oil and coming home with tar on my feet, and realizing there's a consequence for everything. We've done our time in Morro Bay. We have put up with acid rain from the PG&E stacks. We've had cars repainted because of the acid pitting. We've done our time to serve the state of California for energy. And it's time for us to be our unique, natural, beautiful fishing town, not an industrial town. And I want to say thank you to Supervisor Gibson for being here. I appreciate it. And I have a question for you. Would you want these 200-foot ships docking at your precious pier in Cayucas in your beautiful, unique beach town? If so, okay, fine, support it in Morro Bay. If not, please, help us fight it, just like you're fighting to keep it from Cayucas. Thank you.
More, Betty Winholz, Morro Bay. What I handed out was just a short article that references how wind turbines are getting larger and larger as they're putting them in, and that that creates some, some hazard. And I just wanted the council to have that, that reference. I, I too want to be pleased that we're getting some money, though I think it's not enough. And I don't know that we will be doing our own study, but that we will be watching the study that the county does, and, and perhaps evaluating those things that the, the county is not. And I think it's important to bring those items to the, the people's attention. I brought it to the attention of the city council. There will be no new data collection in this study that they're doing on whether or not our harbor should become a port. They're not evaluating whether there'll be skilled labor force increase or not. They're not studying how this will be decommissioned 20, 25 years from now. They're using RINCON, who is the organization or the business that did our EIR for the Vistra, and we haven't been real satisfied with them, and yet that's who the county's using via Mount MacDonald to evaluate the environmental impacts on us, which I think is a shame. I believe that they're not doing anything, as they said, this analysis does not include field studies. It doesn't include any secret level of analysis. And so it, it makes you wonder what it is they are studying with the $600,000 that the county's keeping to evaluate us. And so I, I encourage the council to accept the money and use it wisely for our benefit and, and not for the county's. Thank you.
Natalia Merzley. A couple of things. I, I wanted to address a comment made earlier about the environmental organizations that are supporting this, apparently. The, the wind farms and the battery and all that. And I just wanted to point out that one of the reasons people such as myself no longer support the environmental organizations, which they don't really need the support of the people, because they get their support from the big oil companies and other entities that will profit from the fact that we're trying to industrialize the ocean. The ocean, which has always belonged to the commons, meaning the people, we the people. And it's kind of an historic moment that we might, this generation, this group of people, might have a hand in turning over that historic connection between mankind and his ability to operate on the ocean unfettered by a company that wants to monopolize it. And I just hope that that doesn't happen. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Margaret Carmen, and I want to piggyback on what Natalia said, that if anyone wants to know actual data and numbers of how much money and where they got money from these nonprofit organizations, there are people in this room that can provide that to you. That was not just an off-the-cuff statement she made. They was, like that man said, "Oh, we got money from the Sierra Club." Well, that doesn't impress me at all, because they're getting paid off, and we can give you that data if you'd like it. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment on this item? Please come forward.
Again, Cindy Malman from Cayucas. Some more questions came to mind, guys. One is, what's the commercial port? What is a commercial port? I believe Long Beach is a commercial port, is it not? Do we want Morro Bay to look like Long Beach? I don't think so. I also read that these wind farms, their cleaning situation schedule puts about 350,000 gallons an hour of solvent and oil and other kaka in the ocean. Oh, but the ocean is big. It doesn't matter. It'll be mitigated. And when's the last time you talked to somebody that said, "You know what? I'm going on vacation to Morro Bay. I'm going to go up and see the best plant. Yeah, we're going to go up and get a tour and check it out." Another question is, Sam... Another question is, San Luis Port is very shallow. What are they going to do to mitigate that? Pretty scary, huh? The traffic, all these people coming in, are they going to make jobs for us? Or are they going to build more homes for us? Or are they going to improve our streets so these big, heavy trucks don't break the laterals? This is what happened to me in Cuyocas when they did building up the street. I think there's a lot of questions out here. And I think the biggest one is, is it worth it, really? I don't know. Just another question. Thank you.
Hello, good evening, Nicole Dorfman. I do have a couple of questions, and following on what Betty Winholz said, you know, about that there won't be any new site studies, is, that's a lot of money, $628,000. I'm curious why they're not going to come back out here. That just doesn't make any sense to me. So I have a question. If Morro Bay has any say, what aspects will be studied? Will there be a traffic study? Will there be any kind of evaluation of housing and infrastructure that would be needed to support an industrial port, should that come to be? I also want to say, you know, to piggyback on what somebody else said, Mott-McDonald is not a neutral party. They are a global developer. So I don't know how many studies they've done that were shown to be infeasible, but I imagine not that many because they're in the business of developing ports. You can go on their website. It's really easy to see. So although you all had nothing to do with it, I know Supervisor Gibson has come here today, which I really appreciate. I'm curious why Mott-McDonald was chosen again after they did a study, whenever it was, a couple of years ago, and got everybody's hair on fire by their proposal for Avala Beach, which then had to be retracted and, you know, on the board with the X through it. So they've been really careless already in the past with what they brought before our community and really scared a lot of people, especially down in Avala Beach, and rightfully so. I think it was really irresponsible to put out that sort of data and those sort of graphics when now they're saying, oh, that's absolutely not feasible. Why did Mott-McDonald say it was feasible the first time around? So I do appreciate that Morro Bay is getting money. We need the money. We need to be able to interface with these global corporations. So use it wisely and perhaps see, if you do have any say, can you, can our council determine some of the facets of the study? Can you ask them to study certain things? So thank you for your attention.
Good evening. My name is Paul Gallo from Los Osos. I appreciate this current council for maintaining transparency on issues related to the threat to our coast and ports by industrialization of offshore wind energy area. I've been at recent meetings in Port St. Louis, where the lack of transparency by that governmental agency there has enraged the public, who have been kept in the dark on how the port in St. Louis could be radically changed by industrialization. I just implore you not to be lured into financial incentives that will be dangled in front of you in the future and to transform our special place, this harbor and coastline. I regularly follow the news from towns on the East Coast, and many citizens there who, and governmental agencies, small towns, welcomed offshore wind energy and are now realizing that the damages impact to their coast and communities far await the promised benefits. I hope you will take the time to learn more about what has happened on the East Coast. There's plenty of data out there. I know React, we have a lot of information we can provide to you. And I just ask that you do what's best for Morro Bay.
Richard Sadowski, citizen of Morro Bay. I support the approval of the 9B. And also, you know, one of the things that, like Mandy says, you know, she works in an estuary. I love Mandy. We have a lot of history. And one of the things is, is the importance of our estuary. And, you know, an interesting fact is that one acre of our eel grass sequesters as much carbon dioxide out of the air as an acre in the Amazon forest. And so what I would like to see is, as a previous speaker mentioned, is a good dialogue where we could sit in one room and have a discussion of what all this means and in the grand scheme of pictures, the grand scheme of the picture. Ocean acidification is a, and elevated atmospheric carbon dioxide are going, you know, through, is creating climate change. And it's unfortunate that that's become a real political issue because it's science. And I would love to have a panel discussion where we could discuss all these challenges. And the city of Morro Bay, one of the things is, you know, the challenges that are facing our community, our economic engine is the embarcadero. And, you know, the sea level rise estimates from five years ago have been way under, and we have infrastructures, so that needs to be repaired. So, you know, I thank you that you opened up this for dialogue, and I'm looking forward to having some more of these discussions.
AGP, are there any raised hands in the queue?
Yes, there's one raised hand in the queue. I do not have a name, but there is a number attached to it. There's only one person in the queue. They are allowed to talk. You should be able to speak still? Looks like they are not speaking, so that was the only person in queue.
Are they gone?
I don't see them speaking at all. Their hand is still raised. They still have permission to talk, but they are not speaking, Mayor. Seems they're on their cellphone, but it's not working on their end.
Okay. If it's not working, then I'm going to close public comment on this item and bring it back to council. Thank you all for your comments. I think that, I'll ask the city manager, or I know Mr. Gibson said that he had staff on the Zoom call also, to just give maybe a little insight as to why Mott-McDonald was re-selected and what the study looks like as far as Morro Bay. Do you want to take that, city manager, or did you want to defer it?
Yeah, as far as McDonald portion of the study, I think it's the best deferred to Assistant County Administration Officer Rebecca Campbell.
AGP, can you please allow Rebecca Campbell to speak?
One moment.
Thank you.
All right, Rebecca, you're allowed to speak.
Good evening, members of the council. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Wixom and distinguished members of the council. I appreciate you allowing me to speak via Zoom. So just to address a couple of the concerns, we did work with city staff to develop the scope, and just, it is going to be a more in-depth scope than the original study. The original study was more high-level, that, you know, looked at possibilities, but did not, this study will be more thorough, and it'll look at technical aspects of the areas. That includes planning, environmental assessment, a basis of assessment, an existing conditions assessment, and then there's the public outreach piece that's incorporated into the scope. The Mott-McDonald did have experience of doing this sort of work. They did participate in that original study, and they also participated with the state on the AB 525 process and looked at operations and maintenance facilities. And so that was the main reason why we selected them, to help do this work. We were also under time constraints with the requirements around the grant funding, and so we needed to ensure that we could complete this study. Our goal is to, you know, work close coordination with your city staff and that we engage with the community and the stakeholders, and, you know, making sure that we have close coordination so we can bring information back to your community for what this offshore wind operation, maintenance, infrastructure, and facilities may look like. So I appreciate you and your time.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Any questions from?
I have a question. So originally, I was, I actually fought really hard to get, you know, to speak up for Morro Bay, to get funding because we had spent so much staff time on this topic already. It, you know, it has required quite a bit of staff time. And the funding, the way it's turned out is actually not what I had expected. And it does sound like there's a lot more staff time required by what you just said, Ms. Campbell. I'm wondering, do you think that the, any extra is enough for, or maybe I should ask city manager, Kimball, are we going to be sideways with this again? I mean...
Okay. Mayor Proterm, thank you for your question. I can see your concern. This project, the study, the scope is very detailed, and we are expecting to, we being city staff, are expected to put in hours to coordinate and review the study and working with county and county staff. I would, it will be very difficult to predict at this point if the money is enough. But I would say, to echo what you just said earlier, this is better than nothing. Just thinking about a year ago, when the subcommittee, Mayor and you were in the subcommittee and a few staff members, we were, we had nothing. We started out with zero funding, and then the subcommittee was very, was very direct in the direction as far as getting some funding, getting some resources to boost our staff capacity and with city council's support. That's what we have done. And I would say that I appreciate county, county listening to us and working with us, a partnership. And I, to, in this entire discussion, this process with the county, the county has to consider us and also other agencies. So I do believe that county staff is trying their very best to make this distribution equitable, fair and equitable. I'll just leave it like this for now.
Okay, thank you. I also wonder, you know, we have so much deferred maintenance of, really, the Army Corps of Engineer, a lot of it is Army Corps of Engineer projects. I wonder if any of this study could overlap for, in, you know, to help, if nothing else, help things like that, help further projects like that.
I certainly believe so. I have collected a stack of the prior studies regarding offshore wind, and when we, when we try to respond to some things, I would get to these things, yes. So the question, the answer, short answer is yes. The study we're about to commission, about to start on, it's going to be, the data will be helpful for us to use on some future reviews. I also, for example, we were, RINCON's scope of work, we had discussed with RINCON, I will let Ernest speak on that, that some of the data that we collected for the power plant we could potentially use for this study. Do you want to add some, Ernest, please?
So, Erwin L. Law, Community Development Director, yeah, just to add on. So we did review the scope carefully to make sure that there isn't redundancy or repeating information that we've already collected through the power plant master plan and best EIR.
Then finally, I guess, if, I mean, these things never go over budget, but if it were, if it were to happen to be over budget, how will that be addressed?
I guess being on our end, we will likely to set up some sort of account, and with the finance department to help us monitor the fund. As far as the study, yeah, so just, like, all the grant money that we receive, we'll just have them monitor.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Burton, questions?
Yeah.
Councilmember Edwards, questions? Thank you. Is there any, did you want to add anything else, Supervisor? I'm throwing you under the bus.
I live under the bus. And by the way, congratulations on having a fine community development director. I miss this guy. Let me just say, the way this is structured, with, you know, two-thirds-ish of this money going to a contract that's taking care of all three, working on all three at one time, that, I think, is an efficiency that you can build on, within the sub-recipient monies coming to you to customize or get the answers to the specific questions. So I think in terms of the impact on your staff, which is a real thing, this is a big deal for a city the size of Morro Bay, I think, I think the way that the overall $1 million earmark has been structured gives your staff the most support that it can. And again, as details come up, I'm happy to facilitate further conversations to make sure you're getting your questions answered.
Thank you. I think that the goal of this and the participation in this is this grant money became available from the state and was allocated to the county for distribution and management. It provided an opportunity for the city, as has been shared here numerous times, to receive some funding that we otherwise would not have. We've been doing this on our own and pleading for a while. So this will allow us the opportunity, we hope, to expand the information, to provide factual information. And yes, we all will question that information coming from other firms outside of our community, but we need these things to have the conversation and the workshops and the dialogue. And there will be a lot of eyes, I think, on all of this with the outcome of the reports. reports. But we'll have an opportunity with this funding, and I believe it came from Senator Laird's office, correct? Yes, thank you, Senator Laird, to have these workshops, to continue the dialogue and to have all the stakeholders at the table so we can balance the challenges that come with offshore wind and how that segues into this community and our whole coastal area. I will, will say on the subcommittee with Mayor Protem Landrum that as we have met with the stakeholders through the last year and a half, when the offshore wind companies and other energy companies such as the one down in Port San Luis right now looking at port feasibility, we have always included, and I will always include in our stakeholder group, the NEP, who's always invited and been a participant when we've asked them to because our greatest value and our greatest asset for our community is our estuary. And I think that as long as we keep that at the forefront, and anybody who knows me knows that I'm going to say this every single time. So that's where I come from. And, and the rest of this is an opportunity for us now to have funding we didn't have to expand our knowledge and to garner more information. So comments from anybody unless someone's ready to entertain a motion.
Yeah, I, I thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to comment that I wanted to thank staff for putting this report together. It's, you know, a big thing that you all were pursuing, that money and that funding to help with our community to have a better understanding of, you know, what this would look like for us. I also appreciate the work that the offshore wind subcommittee did, both Mayor Protem and the mayor being diligent about working toward this money as well. I think there was a comment made by the public with regard to, you know, some more specifics, infrastructure, traffic, et cetera, of which I definitely would be interested in having included as far as technical things in the study that would be applicable to us in our town. So I, I do appreciate the idea of this money being spent to really take a look at the things that are unique to us. I appreciate Supervisor Gibson for being here tonight. Thank you very much. Rebecca Campbell, appreciate it, and appreciate this discussion tonight. Lastly, I, I did ask, and I was curious to, if we had a seat at the table, that might be a silly question to ask, but specifically the, our subcommittee members, so the council is there asking those specific questions for us. So just wanted to reiterate that for everyone.
Thank you. Councilmember Edwards, Councilmember Burton?
I, I don't have anything to add. I wanted to make the motion.
Can I go to Mayor Protem first and then circle back to you? Thank you.
I, I guess, you know, I, I really don't have, thank you, Councilmember Edwards, that was, that was really well said. I agree with everything you said. I do want to just acknowledge the fact that we had a really big turnout of public comment on this item. I, I lost count, but I just do want to acknowledge to everyone that's listening that there wasn't anyone in favor of, of this. So I just, you know, I, not, not, not the study necessarily, I don't think, but the, the concept in general. So I just hope that, that, that message is, it was heard by me, for sure.
And, and it would just be a reminder, as Councilmember Edwards says, this is to give us a seat at the table. This isn't putting us any position of, of denying or accepting anything. This is being there and advocating for our community and having an opportunity to work with the stakeholders, including our county partners. And, and I do appreciate the staff. Councilmember Landrum and myself have been in those meetings. Our staff has taken the lead with the county staff, but we have been included. We have had an opportunity to review what the scope of work includes and to add things specific to our community. So for that, we're appreciative and hope that, that this will get us some workshops coming up real soon. And with that, Councilmember Burton?
Okay. I would like to move approval of the agreement and authorize the city manager to execute the funding sub-recipient agreement with the county of San Luis Obispo. The fund supports staffing costs associated with development of the joint operations and maintenance waterfront infrastructure facility siting study, that's a hard one to say, and site readiness plans.
Thank you. And do I have a second?
I second it.
Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're going to take a five-minute break before we go to 9A, which is Vistra Battery Energy Storage System Project Status Update. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, man.
We're going to resume our meeting. Please take your seats or take your conversation outside. Thank you. We're going to move on to 9A. Before we do that, I'm going to give the city manager a real quick minute because I skipped her earlier, so.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I have a brief report. I know that, I want to let, I wanted to announce that city staff has been directed to work on a request for proposal for the market and avenue properties. And we are planning to bring the, the scope discussion before the city council as soon as possible.
Thank you. And I believe with that, we're considering a public workshop too, correct?
If, if the city council directs that, and at that point, we can come to that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to 9A, Vistra Battery Energy Storage Systems Project Status Update. And this is going to be community development, city attorney, and our fire chief. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm Erlin Singhwald, your community development director. So as the mayor mentioned, this item is a three-part presentation to provide an update to the council and community on the Vistra Battery Energy Storage Systems project, which I'll refer to as the BEST from this point on. So this is a three-part presentation. First is a presentation that I'll give on the current status and estimated timeline for the processing of the BEST application. Next, Chief McCrane will give a presentation on the off-site consequences analysis for the proposed BEST project. And then finally, the city attorney will provide a summary of the AB 205 requirements and, and process. This is a receive-and-file item, and, you know, again, the purpose is to inform the, the council and the public. And I'll turn it over to the city attorney for another kind of procedural note for this item.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. As Director Singhwald mentioned, that this is a receive-and-file and more for purposes of the public to understand, I know the council members all understand this, tonight's not a forum for council members to provide opinions on the project, the BEST project itself. So there should be an expectation that council members will be weighing in on whether they approve or disapprove of the project. That would be if and when there's a public hearing for entitlements and permits. So of course, there will be questions, I assume, but, you know, council members are reserving their opinions on the project itself for a public hearing on entitlements, which would be at some point down in the future.
Thank you. So a major focus of my part of the presentation this evening is on, on process. And when discussing process for this project, it's important to distinguish what I'm calling out as the three main elements of the, of the, the project in terms of entitlements. So the first element is the Local Coastal Program Amendment. This consists of a master plan, which is required by our general plan and local coastal program for any development on the power plant property. It also includes a land use change to allow for the, the BEST project. So currently, as many folks are aware, the site is zoned, visitor-serving commercial, and a portion of the site would have to be essentially rezoned to industrial to make the BEST allowable use on, on the property. The standard of review for the Local Coastal Program Amendment part of the project is, you know, consistency with the rest of the LCP as well as the, the Coastal Act. And the Coastal Commission will take final, final action to approve any local coastal program amendment. So final authority on the LCP amendment is with the Coastal Commission. And it's really important to point out that, that the purpose of the LCP amendment part of the project is to make the BEST allowable. So not to allow for, but to make it allowable, again, by adopting a, a master plan and changing the, the zoning of a portion of the site to industrial. And the second portion, our second element of the project is the actual coastal development permit. The coastal development permit is required under our LCP and the Coastal Act for really any development in, in the coastal zone. It covers the actual development of the BEST project itself. The standard of review for the CDP, I'll say for short, is consistency with the LCP and consistency with the master plan that would be developed in that, that first component, the LCP amendment, as previously discussed. And the CDP is what makes, is what allows for, for the BEST project if, if it is approved. Technically, the planning commission of the city would have the approval authority of the coastal development permit, but of course, that decision is appealable to the planning, to the city council and ultimately, appealable to, to the coastal commission. So to summarize very briefly, LCP amendment makes the BEST allowable, the CDP approval approved would allow for the project. And then there's the environmental impact report, which has been a major focus and topic of discussion on the project because that's been the kind of main aspect that city staff and, and the city's consultant Rincon has been working on for the past year or, or year and a half. So I just wanted to kind of outline the, the purpose of the EIR and how it works with the rest of the approvals for, for the project. So it's important to point out that really, the EIR is an informational document. There's, you know, certain requirements that have to be followed, of course, under the California Environmental Quality Act. And one of those requirements is, any EIR has to look at what SEQA practitioners call the, the whole of the project and all foreseeable development that could result from the project. So if we have an EIR that looks at a, a master plan that's going to ultimately allow for the development of a BEST project, the EIR has to also look at the environmental impacts that would result from that BEST project being, being developed. And really, again, the overall, you know, purpose of the EIR and SEQA in general is informed and transparent decision-making. So this isn't, the EIR isn't an approval of the project. If the EIR is certified by the city council, that doesn't necessarily mean the, the project is approved. And I think it's an important point to mention that the actual action on the EIR is to certify the EIR, which means to essentially confirm, you know, the accuracy, validity of the document and that it was prepared consistent with the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act. And so certifying in the EIR, there, there could be times where a lead agency would decide to certify an EIR and, and not approve the project. And that's just an important point to emphasize, that it doesn't equate to approval of, of the project itself. So next slide is covering power plant master plan. So currently, you know, staff is working with our consultants, Rincon, to prepare the power plant master plan. There are two, two major components to it. The first is the kind of background report and envisioning. That part is complete, is currently posted on the city's website on our community development BEST project. So Rincon, the consultant preparing the master plan, is starting to work on the second component, which is the, the design alternatives chapter. And I just outlined here a framework for what that, what that would essentially entail. And also, like, there's been some discussion at the council in, in past meetings for the last month or two regarding the Coastal Commission letter issued from Coastal Commission staff on, on August 2nd. And so this framework for the power plant master plan, you know, takes into account some of those comments that have been raised by, by Coastal Commission staff. And, you know, city staff is working with coastal staff and, and Vistra to better understand, understand those comments and see, you know, to what extent those, those comments will need to be addressed or considered in the continued development of the power plant master plan. So just, you know, briefly, what this, what this framework here outlines is, you know, we start, so with the design alternatives, we start with really the, the known. So what are the, the site constraints? And again, referring to the Coastal Commission staff letter, they outlined, you know, specifically concerns about, you know, unmapped ESHA on the site that wasn't previously identified, as well as coastal hazards from sea level rise and coastal flooding. So this exercise would involve mapping those and then mapping the, the BEST location, of course, with respect to, to the, the site constraints. And then looking at other areas of the master plan that may not be constrained and identifying, you know, conceptually, what land uses would make sense to be located and, and where. And that process, in large part, would be based on public comment that's been received and recorded in that kind of first part, the background envisioning component of the master plan. Also, you know, possibly considering, you know, what makes sense given the existing visitor-serving commercial zoning for the areas that aren't the power plant or aren't the, the BEST site. And then additionally, you know, looking at economic goals, which to a degree goes along with the visitor-serving commercial zoning point there. Additionally, the master plan would really connect the dots, describing the project's consistency with the LCP and Coastal Act if, if that is the case. And if there is a, what I'm going to call, an approvable project, given the, the various site constraints. And again, that's a, a process where we're still working with Coastal Commission staff and, and Vistra to determine that. That, that really hasn't been, been determined yet. Another, you know, major part of our, our work at this point is developing, or I would say beginning the process of developing a, a staff recommendation. So I think as many in the public and the council are aware, you know, our EIR consultant, Rincon, is currently reviewing all of the response, all of the comment letters on the draft EIR and preparing written responses that will ultimately be published in the final EIR. At, at the same time, this is the point in the process where city staff typically has enough information to begin reviewing and synthesizing into what our recommendation is going to be when we take the project to, to the planning commission. And I just, so I just want to outline what that process, you know, usually looks like. And so the staff recommendation is always based in, in facts. And again, we're at a point in the process where we have a lot of facts available to us. So there's, you know, the data and the facts in the environmental impact report, other technical studies that have been provided, agency comments. And again, I'm going to refer to the Coastal Commission staff letter, which is significant since Coastal Commission staff has really ultimate authority on the LCP amendment part of the project. And then also, of course, public comments, you know, to the extent they're, they're based in, in fact, that is information that helps inform what the staff recommendation ultimately is on the project. So taking those facts and then applying them to the criteria that we have to consider. So when we take the project to planning commission with a recommendation, that recommendation's going to have to be supported with, with findings. And those findings have to be based, again, in, in fact. And the findings, this is a very, you know, kind of high-level simplification of what those findings need to cover, but of course, consistency with the LCP and the Coastal Act. So in that master plan and land use change, it has to be consistent with the LCP, it has to be consistent with the Coastal Act, and we have to, if there is a recommendation for approval, have to connect the dots showing how it is consistent. Economic benefits, that's an important component that is, you know, considered in developing a staff recommendation. And then, of course, public health and safety. So any coastal development permit or conditional use permit is, is subject to findings that it would not adversely impact public health and safety. And then with that, so based on that analysis, generally speaking, there's kind of four different, different options to consider when developing a staff recommendation. So the first could be recommending den- So the first could be recommending denial of the project. So for example, if, once we overlay the various constraints and review the relevant LCP policies and Coastal Act provisions, it could be that there really just isn't an approvable project that is going to meet the maybe technological or economic needs of the developer and at the same time be consistent with the planning policies. Of course, there's a possibility that we'll be able to recommend approval of the project as currently proposed. Another option is recommending approval of an EIR alternative. And for example, I know the enclosed alternative is one that's been discussed quite a bit as that could address some of the safety concerns, as I think Fire Chief may touch on in his presentation. There's a fourth option that will happen occasionally where staff's able to recommend approval of essentially an alternative that's not one of the EIR alternatives. So some modified version of the project that isn't evaluated in the EIR alternatives. And there is a way under SEQA to incorporate some supplemental analysis into the EIR to cover some modified version of the project that wasn't covered in the alternatives chapter if that ends up being the approach. So this slide here just covers timeline. And I want to point out, as explained in the staff report, one of Coastal Commission staff's comments is that the city needs to first act on the LCP amendment before processing the CDP for the project. And that makes sense if you refer back to earlier in the presentation, where really the LCP amendment is what makes the best project allowable by creating the master plan and changing the zoning for a portion of the site to industrial. And then that master plan becomes the standard of review for the city to consider when reviewing the coastal development permit. And again, we're taking Coastal Commission's direction on this point since they are a, have ultimate authority on the LCP amendment, and they're obviously a major player in the process. So based on that, we've outlined what I'm calling a two-phased processing of the best project. Phase one being, again, that LCP amendment. And then phase two, if the LCP amendment is ultimately approved by Coastal Commission, phase two would be for staff to then continue processing the CDP application for the project. So this timeline here, I'm not going to go down every single line item in the timeline. It is really for illustrative purposes, explaining that if we had a complete master plan in next month, October 2024, let's say it's a master plan that we're able to, as staff, connect the dots based on those facts and based on the criteria that we have to look at, recommend approval. Then we could anticipate the planning commission hearings in March, April timeframe on LCP amendment. And then city council would need to consider the LCP amendment. And that could happen possibly in May, again, assuming we have a master plan by October. And then, again, this is kind of ballpark estimate, but really illustrative, just to show the steps and relative timeframes, possibly planning Coastal Commission hearings in August of next year on the LCP amendment. If the LCP amendment is approved by Coastal Commission, then again, staff would be able to continue processing the CDP application. That would follow, generally speaking, the normal CDP process where it would go to planning commission. At this point in the scenario, we would have a master plan. So really, planning commission would be looking at the best project's consistency with the master plan. And then, again, planning commission's decision would be appealable to city council. And then city council's decision would be appealable to the Coastal Commission. And I want to point out too, I think I've already emphasized this, but October, to have the master plan ready to go, it's very, very aggressive. I think most likely, we're going to see a timeline if things continue to move forward, at least two or three months beyond what's outlined here, given a more realistic schedule for completing that master plan, based on some of the work that we have to do with Coastal Commission staff to see if we have an approvable project or not at this point. So that concludes my part of the presentation tonight. And I know that was a lot of material. So before we jump into the off-site consequences analysis, I wanted to open it up for council questions on my part of the presentation.
Thank you, Director Singwell. Questions?
That's okay.
I wanted to thank you for going through the parts of the presentation because we did a lot of reading today and the days prior. And it's finally starting to gel for me, the abbreviations and the process. So thank you.
Yeah, I really liked your graphics, too, Mr. Singwell. They were good. I was wondering, so the EIR doesn't equate to an approval of the project. Does it make it more difficult to not approve it?
I want to make sure I understand the question. So does it make it?
Does it make it more difficult to not approve the project if the EIR is approved?
So, no, again, EIR, like you said, doesn't equate to approving the project. It's really just an informational document. So the council understands if the council does approve the project, these are the environmental consequences. But in no way binds or commits the city to an approval. Again, just informational.
And so is there any point along the way, like with the LCP, does that make the project more difficult to not approve?
So I'll take a shot at that. Maybe city attorney wants to add. You know, let's hypothetically assume LCP amendment goes all the way through the process, hypothetically approved by council, approved by the Coastal Commission. That LCP amendment, which is the master plan essentially and changing the zoning for the best project, that should address a lot of the key concerns and the development constraints and safety concerns. A lot of that discussion would happen at the LCP amendment master plan level. And then the CDP would be more just confirming that the best application's consistent with that master plan. Now, again, there's no, wouldn't commit the city to approving the CDP for the project. But still, if the master plan is approved, that's where a lot of the difficult questions, I think, would be addressed. But ultimately, the city could still deny the CDP, I suppose. Maybe city attorney chime in?
Yeah, I could expand a little bit upon that. It's a really good question, MPT. So to actually approve a use permit for the project, in this case, a CDP, CUP, you have to have the correct zoning. And right now, the zoning isn't allow this use. It's visitor-serving commercially, going to need light industrial. The way to make that zoning change has to occur through this local coastal program amendment, through the LCP. So consider the LCP and the EIR. Those are preconditions to even get to a place where you can approve a use permit. So it doesn't make it more likely or less likely. It's just that you need those to occur before you can consider a use permit. But it doesn't affect your decision on the use permit. The standard of review is different. What you're looking at, for a use permit, you're looking at different issues for approval than you are for the LCP or SEQA.
Okay. And if it were determined by Coastal Commission that the area indicated in the plan is not the right area and they wanted to relocate the area, would that signal another application process starting over? Or?
So typically, in that situation, it doesn't start the application process over. It really just results in essentially another alternative or a modified version of the project that would continue to be analyzed or?
So, but if the alternative wasn't included in the draft EIR, then would it have to be?
So the draft EIR doesn't necessarily lock in all of the alternative versions of the project that could be considered by the decision makers. So again, when I worked on EIR projects where ultimately, after all the information is available in the EIR, we have that data, we get comment letters from public and from agencies, we realize that some modified version of the project that wasn't one of the alternatives is the project that we're going to recommend to decision makers. And then there is a way, when we prepare the final EIR, we can have another section of the final EIR that analyzes the impacts of that revised project.
Okay. And as far as the criteria, the economic benefits, does that consider like the potential, are the economic benefits considered the ones that have been studied with that study? I can't think of the name of it. Or do, yes, the Brattle Report, or is that, or is that, does it ever consider other economic impacts other than?
So I will provide?
Like the economic impacts, like in the case of some kind of a perceived event, like those that have happened in other areas and what that potentially could do to the economy? Is that considered?
So on my slide, when I point out the criteria of looking at the economic impacts or economic benefits of the project, that was considering more the, I think it's commonly known that we have been in discussions with Vistra on a term sheet for a community benefits agreement and that that is still a process that's in development. And we released a request for proposals to hire a consultant to review the term sheet and confirm the economic benefits or impacts of the project. So that's kind of an ongoing process that has been put a little bit on hold based on this Coastal Commission staff letter, where we're realizing we have to do some more evaluation, determine what an approvable project might look like. But let's say we get to that point, we have a staff recommendation, and we would kind of proceed with hiring a consultant to better understand the economic benefits of the project and that at some point have a common understanding and public discussion on what the benefits of the project are. And that would be considered in the discussion at the planning commission and like, I don't know, the city attorney or?
But there's no criteria that involves potential economic detriment?
So we haven't, to my knowledge, being here three months, working on this project, we haven't done a study on that.
So Mayor Protem, I believe I see what you're getting at is you're wondering if the council would have the ability to weigh the net economic impact and whether or not there is a negative economic impact that outweighs the economic benefits that are proposed? And absolutely. You know, that would be a discussion really if and when the use permits are before the council at a public hearing. And I think it would be appropriate to balance any economic benefits against any sort of economic negatives that reasonably may occur. And so to answer your question, that analysis hasn't been done yet, but that, I think, would be part of the proper equation to consider when use permits are under review.
Well, the criteria, I thought I understood that went into staff's consideration. And so I just was wondering if that would be, the whole economic picture in general would be considered or just the?
Yes, it would. Yes, I mean, I believe that staff would certainly consider in a town like Morro Bay where tourism is important, what would the impact be on tourism? And I mean, this is analysis that is premature right now because these three steps are land use, SEQA, and then use permits. And when we get to that place, and as the timeline just laid out by Director Singwell points out, the use permits is at the end of the process. And at that point, I would believe, yes, that would be part of the review.
All right. Thank you.
All right, I'll turn it over to Chief McCray for the off-site consequences presentation.
All right. Thank you. Good evening. So tonight, I'm going to discuss the off-site consequence analysis that was provided by Ramble Consulting on behalf of Vistra. The city received this in March of 2024. I presented our analysis of it at the June 25th council meeting. There has not been any new data or any changes to this. There's just been a lot of public comment and questions. It's a fairly technical document. And it's easy to not quite understand some of the exemptions or some of the methodology used in it. So I'm just trying to clarify that and make it a little more easy to understand through this document. We did also have this peer reviewed by D&amp;V Energy, which is a consultant hired on behalf of the city to review safety-related documents. So just briefly, what was proposed is a 600-megawatt or 2,400-megawatt-hour battery energy storage facility, also known as a BES. The project is proposed on the old oil tank site of the Morro Bay Power Plant property. This site's approximately 24 acres out of a total 107-acre property that's owned by Vistra. The initial project was proposed as three buildings specifically built to house batteries. The draft EIR also identifies a cargo container-style enclosure alternative. The enclosure alternative is an emerging trend in the energy storage industry as the technology keeps evolving. This is a graphic of the proposed project. This comes out of the OCA or the Off-Site Consequence Analysis and just shows an aerial view with artist's rendering of what the project should look like. Each building would contain approximately 2,400 battery racks. There are approximately 60,000 battery modules per building. The buildings are spec'd to be two-story buildings, each 91,000 square feet. The building size is approximately 350 feet by 260 feet by 30 feet. So the enclosure alternative is a cargo container style. It would use approximately 174 cargo containers that contain 46 battery racks or 736 battery modules in each container. The containers would be spaced 10 feet apart in groups of eight. And then after each group of eight, those would be spaced 25 feet apart from the next group. This is done per fire code for fire separation and is to limit the spread if there was a fire from one container to the next. It allows for a physical separation. So getting into what is an off-site consequence analysis. Hazards related to best facilities can be broadly classified as electrical, either shock, arc, or flash; chemical, which is toxic emissions; and thermal, fires and/or explosions. The main hazard concerning, main hazard concern with best facilities that use lithium-ion batteries is the risk of thermal runaway potentially leading to fire or explosion. So going into that, what is an off-site consequence analysis? It's an evaluation of the potential risks to the public in the event of a fire, since fires from thermal runaway are the primary safety concern with lithium-ion batteries. This report provides additional information for the city for citing considerations such as any restrictions or limitations on surrounding properties. This report estimates safe distances from airborne emissions that are produced during a fire and analyzes the potential impacts on the surrounding community. So the components of an off-site consequence analysis, there's many pieces to this puzzle. The OCA has many different components to thoroughly evaluate the potential risks to the public. This report evaluates a maximum credible fire event. For this evaluation, a credible fire event is one full block of batteries or one full cargo container, approximately 46 to 48 racks of batteries, depending on the configuration. This is based on the limits to the amount of storage capacity allowed without physical separation, such as firewall's distance or physical distance between assemblies. It also assumes that all active protection systems, such as fire sprinklers, automatic shut-off systems, either fail or are not activated. This is done to ensure maximum fire behavior for the modeling. This is done to ensure maximum fire behavior for the modeling. In a real world situation, those things would be activated, but to determine worst-case scenario for the event, they assume that none of those things function or that they're not activated. The modeling assumes the fire occurs in the building or container closest to the nearest residents to maximize the concentrations. And it also utilizes atmospheric conditions that would produce the highest concentrations at ground level. There's a lot of questions about whether it considered our local winds, our local atmospheric conditions, and it does incorporate those into the modeling. But it takes those knowing that, you know, higher winds are going to disperse the smoke or stable air is going to hold the smoke towards the ground more. And it does models different wind scenarios and different temperatures, humidities, things like that to produce the worst-case scenario for this report. That's, that's the intent of this, is to paint a picture of what the worst possible concentrations could be. It also assumes that the occupant of the closest residence is outside and exposed to the plume for the entire duration of the event. Ultimately, it identifies the furthest distance where serious injuries from exposures would no longer occur. What is not evaluated? So this is not a comprehensive evaluation of all possible hazards associated with the BES. This does not evaluate the effects of fire suppression systems such as sprinklers, firefighting activities. The purpose is to determine the maximum values of potential exposures. Things like firefighting and sprinkler activity reduces the hazards. It does not address other causes of failures such as natural disasters, mechanical failures, or et cetera. It does not evaluate other forms of pollution such as water contamination from firefighting, leaks from damaged batteries, or other mechanical failures. It does not evaluate environmental concerns such as to the marine environment, the estuary, animal life, or plants. It, I want to emphasize, this only evaluates the effect on humans from the smoke. The primary concern was hazardous chemicals found in the smoke during a fire, and that's what this specific report evaluates. There will be, at different points in the process, evaluations of other hazards. But given the primary concern was thermal runaway and airborne particulates in the smoke, that's why this was presented to us early on in the process. So the methodology and assumptions of the process. So the U.S. EPA has guidance documents that outline the required parameters of an OCA to ensure a conservative assessment of potential health and safety risks. These are standard guidelines that are utilized by federal agencies in determining hazards for different projects. This report utilized data from many live-fire tests of the various lithium ion-based battery technologies that are currently used in energy storage. This data evaluated the different gases and quantities available in each battery type. The most common battery types used in grid-scale storage are lithium, nickel, magnesium, cobalt oxide, lithium iron phosphate, lithium, nickel, cobalt, aluminum oxide. Those are the most common ones. The standards utilized are widely accepted guidelines on exposure to hazardous airborne pollutants and utilized by the EPA and the American Industrial Hygiene Association. Again, I just want to emphasize the atmospheric conditions modeled were done with the purpose to get the highest concentrations at the closest receptor site. It does evaluate our local conditions, but it takes those and inputs them and determines what would give the worst-case scenario so they could see in a perfect storm, if all the stars aligned and it was the worst it could possibly be, what would the measured concentrations be at the closest residence? So the air pollutants that were specifically called out and evaluated in this study are hydrogen fluoride, hydrogen chloride, hydrogen cyanide, and carbon monoxide. These were selected because they are present in all products of combustion for all types of lithium ion batteries utilized in energy storage. There are other flammable gases and elements present in the smoke, but many of them are consumed by the fire or not readily dispersed in the air. These contaminants are considered to be the most impactful to humans in the quantities present in lithium ion battery fires. So the standards used by the EPA and other agencies when they're evaluating hazardous exposure to chemicals, there's two of them. One of them is acute exposure guideline levels, and I'll talk about those first. AEGLs or acute exposure guideline levels describe the human health effects from once-in-a-lifetime or rare exposure to airborne chemicals. AEGL values, concentration levels for different exposure periods differ because the same health effect could be a result of a brief exposure to a very high concentration or a prolonged exposure to a lower concentration. The three levels in AEGL 1 is typically would be reversible symptoms such as coughing, irritation, that resolve once you're removed from the exposure. Level 2 is where you will have irreversible or other long-lasting health effects, and it could impair your ability to escape. Level 3 is a concentration that the general population, including susceptible individuals, could experience life-threatening health effects or death. So the different durations and exposure levels were evaluated based on the exposure guidelines. The other guideline evaluated in this is the Emergency Response Planning Guides. These have the same three levels and the standards are the same. The level 1 is you're going to have some mild health effects that are transient. They're going to resolve when the exposure is removed. Level 2 is where you will actually have some longer-lasting, long-lasting health effects from it. And level 3 is life-threatening health effects could develop. The difference between the two is ERPG levels are based on one hour of exposure. And then the AEGL levels are based on a rarer, once-in-a-lifetime exposure to it, and they are measured in different durations. So the exposure limits for both the AEGL and ERPG, level 2 was chosen because this is the limit where a person would have lasting health effects. That's the industry standard when evaluating exposures. Different exposure durations were evaluated based on the standard exposure guidelines. Again, it assumes that the person exposed to standing outside being continuously exposed for the entire duration with no protection. There were multiple air dispersion models that were evaluated for this report. Each model had their different strengths and weaknesses for this project. Ultimately, a model known as AirScreen was chosen. AirScreen produces estimates of worst-case one-hour concentrations from a single source without the need to go back and continuously hourly update the meteorological data. It also includes conversion factors to estimate worst-case three-hour, eight-hour, and 24-hour concentrations. A fire will result in an elevated plume with some heat associated to it. One of the models, Aloha, it's not designed to handle fires outside of very specific scenarios contained in the program, and that does not include a module for battery fires. Another module known as FAST, PHAST, does not have a battery fire module as well, and it's proprietary. It was created by DNV Energy. So the data in it is less appropriate for a public-facing evaluation, so it wasn't chosen. It's more of a technical model used by industry. Screen 3 and AirScreen are two others that are both appropriate for use in this analysis. But AirScreen is the most recent and being continually updated, so that's why it was chosen as the air modeling program for this. The report points out that the distance to sensitive receptors is approximately 132 meters to the closest in the proposed project and 135 meters in the enclosure alternative. So this is the proposed project and then 135 meters. And that's going to the trailers on, just on the opposite side of the creek from there. And by sensitive receptors, it's, it's looking at the closest residence, the place where somebody's going to be sleeping overnight. It doesn't factor in receptors that are, you know, people walking in the area, people in stores nearby, things like that. It's looking at people that have a residence or a place where they would be sleeping overnight. So what this slide points out, that the concentration at the nearest residence would not exceed the AEGL 2 or the ERPG 2 limits. The concentrations at the closest receptor are predicted to be higher in the proposed project than the enclosure alternative due to the different concentration profiles between the two scenarios. The concentrations at the closest receptor are higher for the proposed project compared to the enclosure alternative, a difference that is likely because of the characteristics of the smoke plume. For the enclosure alternative, the highest concentration occurs closest to the emission source, and the concentration gradually decreases as distance from the emission source increases. However, for the proposed project, the highest concentration occurs several meters away from the building footprint and then decreases with distance. Again, it's based on the size of the buildings, the type of air vents, and then the fire behavior associated with the different building types. I do want to point out on this slide, it shows the four chemicals. Carbon monoxide and hydrogen fluoride are the only two that exceed 50% of that AEGL 2 level, and that's at eight hours. For carbon monoxide, it gets up to 82% of that, of that AEGL 2 level at eight hours. And then it's only at 40% in the enclosure alternative. For hydrogen fluoride, it approaches 63% of that limit. But then if you go to the enclosure alternative, that is reduced to 31%. So you can see, just by the different design styles, it reduces that exposure limit by almost half. So going into the findings here, as seen on the previous slide, the concentration levels of carbon monoxide and hydrogen fluoride exceed 50% of the AEGL 2 limits at the closest residence in the proposed project after eight hours of exposure. These concentrations are reduced by approximately half in the enclosure alternative. The airborne pollutant with the furthest distance is carbon monoxide. In the proposed building version, the CO exceeds limits at 131 meters. In the enclosure alternative, that distance is reduced to 70 meters. The only other chemical that extends off the project property is hydrogen fluoride, and its limit is 37 meters, just barely off the project property and does not reach the roadway adjacent to the property. I have a visual representation here that yellow circle is the eight-hour exposure limit of carbon monoxide, and this is the enclosure alternative. And then this is a view of it in the building project that was proposed. So before I conclude, or to conclude, I just want to reemphasize, this report is not a complete safety analysis of this project. This only models the probable risks related to airborne byproducts in the event of a fire. There are many other safety factors that will be evaluated at the appropriate phase in this project, and just tried to provide some clarity because of how technical this report is. And with that, I'm happy to take questions.
Any questions for Chief?
Thank you for that report. It is really technical and hard to comprehend. There's ants on here. Okay, does, I don't think it does, based on what you just said, but I'm just going to ask anyways. Does the worst-case scenario consider potential, like if a, like a fuel truck was going by and it exploded and like mixing of other chemicals with those chemicals? Does it include?
It does not.
It doesn't?
So the, the primary risk associated with battery energy storage is thermal runaway and a fire as a result of that. So it looks specifically at what is the byproducts of combustion of that product? And what are the health risks to people in the vicinity of that product?
Okay.
And this does not account for people engaged in firefighting activities that are up close to this. There is a difference with, you know, the protective equipment, respiratory protection. This looks at what is the risk to the general public outside of that, you know, kind of exclusion zone where the firefighters would be working.
Okay, and with those AEG levels? Those studies that know, that can tell you how long the exposure needs to be, how long have those studies been in place? Because things like, you know, asbestos, cigarettes, mercury, were all at one time considered safe. And I just wonder, like, is this like a long-term thing possibly that could be, you know, maybe not, we find out later that it wasn't a good idea? Or those numbers, those, those did long-term damage or?
So I don't have an exact date on how long these have been in use. I know that they're continuously updated. The chemicals that are added are changed as new research is done. The chemicals specifically called out in this are byproducts of combustion of almost any type of fire. It's not exclusive to lithium ion batteries. Carbon monoxide, hydrogen fluoride, hydrogen cyanide, hydrogen chloride. Those are all present in a regular residential structure fire, a vehicle fire, commercial structure fire. They're just in different quantities based on what, what fuel load is in those things, whether there's a lot of plastics, if there's a lot of traditional fibers, they're going to be different. New, modern things have a lot more polymers, chlorinated polymers. Fire-resistant items increase some of those chemicals. So they're present in all, all forms of combustion, just the quantities are different. These standards are utilized by agencies such as the EPA, OSHA, other agencies like that as they're evaluating, you know, safe working environments. These, these are the guidelines and standards that are utilized for that, and that's why they're utilized for this.
Okay, and then it's really hard for me to tell on the map where the nearest residence is. And I talked to some people just tonight that were live-boards on the, on the bay. And does, is it in that, like, would it reach to where they are? Because those aren't, I wouldn't have considered those residents. I wouldn't have even thought of that, but they reminded me.
Based on that map, it doesn't appear that any of the live-aboard vessels that I'm aware of are in that vicinity. You know, the ones that are identified are the houses and the RV or trailer park across the creek.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I really appreciate this education opportunity. As you know, I do like that. I think after hearing this report for, I think, a second time, it really hit me this time, maybe it was just your reference to it, but the things that this report does not hit, one of which, of course, is you and your team, and the other one is the actions actually taken by you and your team. And I caught that tonight, and I guess what my question was, would be is when would we find that information out?
Specifically, like how that would impact this? So, you know, in theory, firefighting activities are going to, you know, limit the duration that the fire is burning or prevent the spread of the fire to include other battery modules that would, you know, propagate and create a larger incident. You know, with new technology, constantly emerging tactics, you know, it's changing from the premise of where you used to be of the mindset of dumping thousands of gallons of water on the battery itself. Now, you know, the, the thought and the research is showing that it's safer to try to cool the, the surrounding modules, keep them from becoming involved, and, and let the, the battery that's fully involved consume itself more rapidly. And if you're applying water to it, it's going to slow that process down and make it burn longer, producing, you know, smoke for a longer duration. So again, it's constantly changing. A year from now, you know, the recommended tactics might be different as the technology changes or, you know, new technologies developed on how to mitigate that or how to extinguish it. There could be new technology utilized to counteract the fire or to cool it or stop the thermal runaway. So again, it's, it's an evolving process. Firefighting practices change as the technology changes. So, you know, in theory, the firefighting activities are going to reduce the time that it burns and reduce the amount of pollutants that puts off.
Thank you. And, and then when I was looking at the map too, this also struck me. I, I thought about these things before, but it just kind of hit me again. And thinking about conversations that we've had with regard to, you know, accessibility of getting to and from the rock, and, and how occasionally we, we struggle with moving people around, right? And so, I'm just wondering at what point would we be taking a look at that safety component with regard to if there was a thermal runaway?
Yeah, so there would be a point in the process, and I can't tell you exactly what point that is, because as we go through this process, different reports are gonna come out, and different items are evaluated. You know, looking at the distances referenced in that, the 131 meters for the exposure level, you know, that's not necessarily an evacuation distance or an isolation distance. That's, that's technical data that says if you stand here for eight hours, you can get up to this amount of exposure. You know, when you're factoring in things like an isolation distance, you're looking at what's required for the safety of the firefighters to conduct their operations. You're also looking at, you know, what is the potential risk to the people in that little area? And also, there's another circle around that where people that, you know, might be exposed to the smoke and have a reaction, that's not necessarily a physical reaction, but they have a concern or they become, you know, start feeling a, a physical effect from it that generates a call for service to the fire department to come and evaluate them. And then it removes those resources from fighting the fire to address that. Sometimes it's easier to make that evacuation or shelter-in-place distance a little bit larger to kind of remove that concern as well. So all of those things will have to be evaluated as we look at emergency response plans, guidelines, working with the, the property owner, the vendor, looking at whatever at that point in history, you know, what the NFPA recommendations are, the National Fire Protection Association, what industry best practices are. So there's a lot of things that would be evaluated, fire codes as well. So, you know, what I might say today, a year from now, might look vastly different. So it's gonna be at that point in time where we're doing that evaluation, I'm just, we're not there yet.
Thank you, Chief. Really, really appreciate going this thorough and in-depth, really.
Happy.
Thank you both so far. A lot of information. I have a question. Is a lot of this evaluation for the off-site analysis done because of the location in proximity to residents, businesses, and things? Or is this a standard analysis that will be done, like best cited in the middle of Carissa Plains where nobody's around or something?
It's becoming a standard. You know, as the technology emerges, as there's been incidents, you know, everything in fire and life safety is reactionary. You know, at fire sprinklers, seat belts in your automobile, they're all as a result of incidents that have happened, and then fire codes evolve. And, you know, so this evaluation is a reaction to, you know, incidents happening and not having data, and agencies not knowing how to, you know, how, how far they should evacuate or what the real threat is. So, you know, they're starting to require reports like this to help the policymakers make better decisions and be able to evaluate and have, you know, more of a known hazard and know, know exactly how to mitigate those. So, in, in the industry, this is becoming standard. It's not just because of where this is cited.
Yeah, I just didn't know if it begged the question because of the difference of population versus non-populated areas. The, and I, and I agree, thank you, Councilmember Edwards, you know, it's like all the things that aren't included right now. It's hard. It's, it's a lot that you're giving us, but still so much that's not. And one of the questions I had, and maybe I missed it just because it was so much, with the master planning, how does the off-site analysis affect that, those, that master planning process if you're talking about that area of evacuation? Does that factor into?
It would definitely be useful data to look at what types of, you know, projects could be considered on that same property or in proximity to it. You know, looking at, you know, would you want, you know, hotels or places where people are sleeping overnight? Or, you know, care facilities or things that have people with limited mobility? Or is it, you know, you know, shops and restaurants and things where people are typically easy to move around? And so, all, all of those things are factored into it. I can't say what effect that will have at this point, but, you know, this is just one more piece of data that we would use to evaluate the overall picture.
For the master planning, yeah. I would think it would be a really important part of it. Thank you.
Yes, so, when, you might have already answered it, but this is so confusing. You know, and not confusing, you've made it really a lot more clear, but it's just, it's so technical. So, you said that this isn't the final, like there will need to be more, you know, safety kind of studies, and I'm just wondering at what point those, those will be. Maybe it was, you already answered it, and I apologize if you did.
So, there'll be a lot of other assessments. You know, it's gonna vary on, you know, ultimately how the project progresses. But there'll be things like looking at an emergency response plan, a site safety plan, hazard mitigation plan, even things such as, you know, evacuation procedures, sheltering in place procedures, you know, guidelines and standard operating procedures for the fire department on tactics that we would use. All of that would be considered, there would be things considered such as, you know, fire sprinklers, fire flow calculations, you know, water storage requirements, you know, water containment requirements, all of that type of stuff would need to be evaluated.
And, and like using Mr. Singwald's timeline, where kind of would that kind of, where'd stuff start to plug in?
My guess is towards the end of the, you know, going through the conditional use permit process, I believe, but I'm, I'm new to this process as well on exactly where that would fall in. So we're, you know, as we're getting these documents and as we're moving through the process, identifying, you know, at that appropriate time, based on the data we have.
So in that first phase?
In first and second.
Right, oh, okay, both of them. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Newmeyer, for you to add?
Yes, I have a presentation on AB 205.
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, Assembly Bill 205 is important for review of this project because it allows the developer to go to the state of California to get its permits and to bypass local control. This law was signed by the governor June 30th, 2022, and it is available to any developer of a best of 200 megawatts or more, and it allows them to get their permits, their main permits, from the California Energy Commission, which is a statewide agency. According to the Legislative Council's Digest for this bill, what this does is it establishes a new certification process for an energy storage system capable of storing 200 megawatt hours or more of electricity. It authorizes a person proposing to construct these facilities to file an application for certification with the California Energy Commission. They're calling it an opt-in certification program. Specifically, what that means is that if a developer wants to go to the C E C to get their permits, they do not need to secure any permits from a local government. This is an unusual law, it's an unusual procedure. It is something that Sacramento has done to allow state decisions to be made for what typically are local decisions. And so, it is available to developers really at any time in the process. They don't have to wait for a potential denial. They can just go straight to the C E C and not engage with the local government at their option. What it means if they do go to the C E C is that, in lieu of any permit certificate or similar document required by any local agency for the use of the site and the related facilities, they can get that from the C E C. And the C E C can supersede any applicable statute ordinance or regulation of the local agency. There are a few other state agencies that are involved. The one relevant here is the California Coastal Commission. They still retain their authority over the permitting process. And so, if AB 205 was used by a developer of a best, then they would need to get a permit from the C E C, and they would need to get their C D P directly from the coastal commission. So if they, if a developer does do that, there are some requirements that are important to know. One of them is that they have to secure findings from the C E C that there is what the law refers to as a net positive economic benefit to the local government. That would be at the determination of the C E C. And specifically, it talks about making a finding at the state level that there are economic benefits, including things like employment growth, housing development, infrastructure, environmental improvements, et cetera. That would be in the hands of the C E C. Another thing they have to do is they need to get a benefit agreement with one or more community-based organizations. Interestingly, there's a list of available community organizations, which includes labor unions, Native American tribes, or the city. But they don't have to do a benefits agreement with the city. They can do it with another group. And the C E C does have a standard for if they preempt any local laws. And so that is they need to make a finding that the preemption is required for the public convenience and necessity. And that would be at the determination of the C E C. They also would have to show that there isn't a more prudent or feasible means to achieve that public convenience and necessity, but these would be findings that the C E C would be making. In regards to the coastal commission, there would still need to be a C D P, a coastal development permit issued by the coastal commission. What they would be guided by is, or actually their burden of meeting are the standards of the coastal act. And so, it's important to know that for the Morro Bay City Council, if the Morro Bay City Council considers a C D P, then you're bound by your local coastal program, which means you're bound by the local zoning. If the coastal commission reviews the C D P, they only look to our local coastal program for guidance. It's the coastal act that guides their decisions. Now, they try to follow our local coastal program, but they don't have to. And this was discussed somewhat in the letter that they provided to the city of Morro Bay recently, and that was part of this report. Coastal Commission also indicated some issues that, whether they looked at a C D P on their own or they looked at one that was appealed from Morro Bay, they talked about some, what they consider to be development constraints concerning E S H A mapping and also coastal hazards. And the city right now is in discussions with the coastal commission about what that means to them. And the city right now is trying to analyze those issues in more depth. A few more details about AB 205 is that the local agency, in this case, Morro Bay, has to be consulted before an application is filed by the developer. That's really the only time that they need to discuss with the local city their, their application. If the C E C does the permits, then they're required to hold two meetings in the area of where the development is being planned. And the first one has to occur after their application is deemed complete, but before the draft D I R is done. They're also supposed to hold a meeting in the area to receive comments on the draft D I R. There are certain labor requirements, which the developer needs to demonstrate to the C E C that they're gonna pay prevailing wages and have a skilled and trained workforce. And it also provides an expedited timeline where from when the application is submitted to potential approval or denial by the C E C and the coastal commission, you're looking at about a year and a half. Meaning that the California Energy Commission has 30 days to review their application and ask questions, and basically they're, they're expediting, deeming it complete. They have 270 days to review CEQA and get the permit to a public hearing before the C E C. And then after that, the coastal commission has 90 days to then review a certification by the C E C, if that's what happens, to determine whether they would issue a C D P or not. And finally, CEQA would be conducted by the C E C. They would be the lead agency. So, this is a significant bill because it definitely is Sacramento preempting local control, and it's important for this discussion for the role of AB 205 in this process, I think, to be understood. And open for any questions on this Assembly Bill 205.
Thank you, Mr. Newmeyer. Questions?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Newmeyer. I really appreciate, again, this educational opportunity for our community that I was hoping for and looking forward to, and that people at home could hear this as well as it being posted for people to read and look back at. I think what I got out of this, and I also appreciated being able to review the C E C opt-in certification and some of the details that you included, especially pertaining to the possibilities of what we would get, not get, may or may not get if, if AB 205 was exercised. And there were some variables in there that, you know, in, in, in our perfect universe, I had, you know, I, I wanna know the answer to. But unfortunately, that's not the case, and it's kind of out there in the ethers, I guess, if this did go to, if they did, if Vistra did go to and exert AB 205. I appreciate you also running through the timeline, because I was curious about that as well. And I think, also as well as the meetings, the process. So I think you actually answered most of my questions. I just wanted to make sure the public had those things to refer back to that I mentioned. Thank you.
Councilmember Barton, questions? No, councilmember?
I just have one question. The, all of the studies that we're having done right now, if the project gets, goes to AB 205 and goes to the C E C to be permitted, who owns the studies that we have done? Do we own them, or do, does Vistra own them? And would they use those studies to, like, help their, their, would the C E C use those studies, or?
That's a really good question, Mayor Protem. I would say that those are our proprietary information, and that we own the studies. And so it'd be up to us whether or not they could be used or not. You know, once they're in the public domain and studies are published, somebody else certainly, you know, would be available to use them. But work that we've done that is confidential and is not in the public domain is proprietary. There's some nuances there, but they're our studies.
But, so they, they would have to start all over again, or they would just copy our studies that are public? Or how, how does that work?
That would depend upon what the C E C wants to do. I'm assuming that they would, you know, be conducting their own CEQA analysis. I don't think that, as the lead agency, they would just defer to the work that we've done. You know, it's certainly the work that's been done, the studies, they presumably would take a look at them, but they're gonna issue their own CEQA findings, I would assume.
And then if there's a controversy within the two studies, how, how was that resolved?
So, if AB 205 was used, then Morro Bay would be able to participate at the public hearings akin to the way the public participates here at meetings with the Morro Bay City Council. And so, the city council at that point presumably would, if they wanted to, could publicly decide through a resolution or a minute order to direct staff to participate in the process and to advocate one way or another before the C E C. I would hope that a state agency would respect the local community and would listen to the opinions of the local community. And, you know, the coastal commission also is another agency that has decision-making authority over this. And historically, the coastal commission is more, I guess, open to hearing what local community members are concerned about. The California Energy Commission is much more of a distant state agency, if you will. That's, I think they'd be holding the hearings in San Francisco, so if that answers your question.
Well, I meant, like, if there's the same, if there's duplicate studies, and they're all done by experts, then who's the? all done by experts, then who's the, I mean, how?
That would be up to the CEC to make a determination on whether or not they believe that the, the DIR that they had before them was properly conducted and it meets the requirements of the environmental, it, it properly meets the standards of SEQA. Because, understand, a SEQA report is, is simply supposed to be an informational document for the decision-making body on the environmental impacts. And so that would be up to them. If there were inconsistencies between, you know, reports that Morro Bay had generated, and then the CEC finally approves, then that would certainly be something that the city could pursue in various, various ways, starting with pointing out the inconsistency.
And then is there a liability with, you know, if, have any of these been successfully gone through AB 205?
So my understanding is right now is that there are some pending, but there have been no battery energy storage systems that have actually been approved by the CEC. This is a new process that was actually signed as an urgency legislation by the governor two years ago. And so it is to be seen what the CEC's approach is to these, and how receptive they are to taking into account local communities' concerns. And, you know, I would say Morro Bay is fortunate that we also have the Coastal Commission that will have jurisdiction over this. And a lot of communities just have that one agency. I mean, there's a few other ones that have overlapping authority, but the big one is Coastal Commission for.
Well, in theory, well, if we didn't have the Coastal Commission, or, or in theory, if it got approved by the CEC, and there was some sort of a, an accident, who has the liability? Is it the, the CEC does, not the, not the applicant, not the Vistra? It would be, all the liability goes to?
Generally, a properly issued permit is not a basis for liability for an agency issuing it. If there was an accident, or if there was a catastrophe, then typically it would be the site owner that would have liability. There are a lot of government immunities for issuing use permits, and so typically, typically plaintiffs don't really get anywhere challenging the issuance of a use permit if it was properly issued. The, the issue is whether or not that use permit was properly issued in the first place. But assuming it was properly issued, liability doesn't generally attach to the issuing agency.
Thank you.
Just want to, appreciate it, Mayor. One last thing that I was thinking about. If this was to go to the CEC, it, we would end up, if we didn't have our master plan, for example, which we have, we're working on, we're in progress with, is what I'm hearing tonight. We could end up having them determine what our plan is. Is that correct?
So the CEC does not have, they're not bound by our local zoning. They're not bound by our local coastal program, or our master plan, or, you know, they're supposed to take it into consideration, but they can override it if they find it's in the best interests of, quote, "public convenience and necessity." Coastal Commission actually has a mandate to consider our LCP as guidance. So, you know, we've actually talked to Coastal Commission briefly about that, and they just have stood by the fact that it's guidance and not binding. Now, they do have to follow the Coastal Act. And so, again, because Morro Bay's in the coastal zone, or at least the, the best, the proposed BES is in the coastal zone, there's an extra layer of burdens that the issuing agencies have to meet. And specifically, the Coastal Commission is going to have to comply with the Coastal Act, which brings us back to their concerns on ESHA mapping and coastal hazards. So that's a big part of this, if AB 205 were to be pursued by the developer.
I'm going to open public comment. I have two speaker slips. I'm going to start with, after that, I'm going to ask you to come up. We have 30 minutes left, and I'm not going overtime tonight. So first up is Debbie Thorson, and second is Rachel Wilson.
Okay. My name's Debbie Thorson. I'm a Morro Bay resident. I want to thank you, Fire Chief, for your comprehensive evaluation on all of these fire safety review. I'd like to address, thank you to the staff, all of you, for the update on all of this. It's such a big issue for us in the community. Thank you. I'd like to address the part of the report which refers to the off-site consequences analysis, which evaluates potential risks to the public in event of a fire. As our Fire Chief told us, I'd like to address specifically what, specifically what is not in the analysis, but what is not in their, what is, I'm sorry, not what is in their analysis, but what is not in the analysis. I think this is extremely important. I understand this is an up-and-coming study that we learn as we go, and these are definitely community issues. This is the slide seven of the presentation. There's several important consequences of a fire which have not been evaluated, as Fire Chief told us. These include active fire suppression activities, flood, earthquake, and other system failures, ground-based contamination by water, runoff by firefighting activities, impacts to animals, marine life, and the environment. These consequences of a fire would have a significant impact on our community. For example, fires at other battery plants in this past year have resulted in the use of hundreds to thousands to millions of gallons of water for suppression and decontamination. If any of this water was to run into the bay, it would most certainly negatively affect the area, sea otters, and other sea life of the bay. The thorough evaluation of fire control in the proposed BES must be fully addressed, must fully address the safety of our Morro Bay community. Thank you.
Good evening, Rachel Wilson, and thank you, Chief Crane. I am questioning the data, the wind data, that Rambo used in their OCA. If you look at the slide up here, you can see that it states that Morro Bay and the closest meteorological stations, which it shows as being located at San Luis Obispo Airport and Oceano. Next slide, please. Now, the data from wind rose plots is extremely important in determining how far and in what direction toxic fumes would move, since the wind rose plot is a graph that shows both the wind's direction and its strength in a specific location. As you look at the wind rose, and this wind rose, and the one that follows, I want you to notice that in the upper left-hand corner, there is an emblem, and it represents Iowa Environmental Masonet, which is a service that Rambo used to get its data for the OCA. Next slide, please. Here you see the Oceano wind rose plot, and I want you to notice, again, that emblem at the front, and just look at the plot itself. And notice also that it says, "This is where we would expect Morro Bay's wind to look like." So take a really quick look at that graph. So, next slide, please. I was curious as to why there weren't any other closer stations, so I Googled wind rose plots for Morro Bay, and I came up with the map of available plots from the Iowa Environmental Masonet Service that Rambo used for its data. Note that there are a lot of stations closer than San Luis Obispo and Oceano. As a matter of fact, there is one right next to the power plant property on the Embarcadero. Next slide, please. If you look at the wind rose plot for Morro Bay, it has the identical emblem on top. It looks identical for everything else, except this data is located right where the power plant property would be. Also, this data looks closer to that, that was at San Luis Obispo Airport, that Rambo said was not, did not look like the data that we should use. So my question is, why did Rambo OCA not use this Morro Bay data that sits right at the power plant property? Why did they choose to use data in San Luis Obispo and in Oceano? And since this data is so critical for that OCA and the fume analysis and the toxicity and the residences, should the OCA be redone to reflect this data at the power plant site? Thank you.
Thank you for sharing AB 205. We have studied that a bit and are quite dismayed, and really saddened to know that Senator Laird and our former council member, Don Addis, supported it. Supported a bill that literally stripped us of our governance. I won't be voting for them again, and it's the epitome of stealing our democracy. Thank you for your guys' reports. They were very good. I don't know if, how you list, you know, the different steps that they're doing, are sequential, but I noticed that public safety is, health and public safety is at the bottom. And I'm trying to reconcile in my mind, if we were going to invite this toxic industry into our little tiny town, 600 megawatts, the biggest in the world, which to me is just, who would think to approve something like that? Why would health and public safety be at the bottom? Why wouldn't we address that first and completely? Because I think if we did address it first and completely, and we thought about the well-being of our quality of life, we would say no to it. We wouldn't even think about it. We wouldn't have wasted how many years? I mean, Cindy, I think you guys have been talking about this at the chamber since, what, 2018 or something like that? I mean, it, economic growth is wonderful. Economic impact carries a negative with it also. We can't ignore the negative. Why wasn't the negative listed? I mean, we're gambling, not with money, we're gambling with people's quality of life. Our hearts, our souls, our life savings are invested in Morro Bay. Many of us have sacrificed vacations and, you know, big houses with pools and things so that we could just live in this really pristine area. And we deserve to have our quality of life, our air, maintained. And the OT fire tells us everything. They were, they had to leave their homes. The fire took over, well, over a week, I think, two weeks, to burn out. And the whole time, toxic gases are going in the air. So I'm picturing our high school, my house, and a Santa Ana wind, and there's a fire that's burning for days. Nobody's going to be able to be over there. I mean, Rachel was right, that study did not reflect Morro Bay at all, because a Santa Ana wind will burn, will blow directly towards Morro Bay High School. Please address the public safety and health before going forward. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Jim Warner from Morro Bay. On the subject of environmental impacts, positive, negative, what is the environmental impact if, in the case of an OT Mesa-type of fire, that smoke, toxic fumes blow across my home for days, weeks at a time? Does my house require decontamination? Who pays for that decontamination? I don't know about a Vistra power plant, a battery type, but Diablo Canyon has a national exemption. They can melt that down, decimate our entire county, and they have no public liability. And the power industry would not invest in nuclear power without a liability-free guarantee. Does that kind of guarantee exist for Vistra Power? I have one real major investment, that's my home. What happens to it if I have to leave it for a week, and then I have to pay $100,000 to make it habitable again? Thank you.
Lynda Donnelly, Morro Bay. These are questions that we couldn't find answers to in the staff report. And one of them is first, why wasn't the Vistra MOU from June 9, 2021 included in the staff report? It is what sets the stage. Regarding AB 205, has the California Energy Commission already been contacted and involved in planning the BES project for Morro Bay? Even if, are they even aware? And if so, who at the commission's staff is overseeing it? Will the CEC be able to make justifiable findings as to why the BES project must be located in Morro Bay and nowhere else? The project could be located in a better, more appropriate setting, such as out in the Creaseau Plains, where the Tope has solar farm is, or next to the Men's Colony, where the Gold Tree Solar Farm is, since the facility is not coastal-dependent? According to AB 205, the CEC, will require to do, is required to do an DIR. Will that be a new dependent, independent document, or will they utilize the current BES draft DIR? Please explain the meaning of AB 205 and permitting the BES facility where it says, quote, "It would require the Energy Commission to forward the application to a local government having land use and related jurisdiction in the areas of the proposed site and related facility, and would require the local agencies to review the application, submit comments on the application." Does that mean that the city still has a say in any certification permitted by the CEC? The staff report makes it sound like a done deal, even though a ballot measure is pending, which would severely affect the timeline that is being presented tonight. AB, the measure, A24, was not even mentioned. What would the timeline if the measure passes? Also, the hypothetical timeline does not say when the final DIR will be considered at the Planning Commission or at the city council. If they cannot certify the final DIR, how would that affect the timeline? According to the letter from the Coastal Commission staff, the city would need to certify a final DIR as a precursor to city approval of any version of the master plan. The hypothetical timeline has the master plan happening in October of 2024, and the final DIR happening in December of 2024. And it is out of order, it should be the reverse. Lastly, since the land use zoning was just recently certified by the California Coastal Commission, which does not allow the proposed BES industrial use on the former power site, power plant property, is the city obligated to even do an LCP amendment, or can the city simply deny the application based on the current land use zoning? Thank you.
I agreed to read something for someone who had to not, who couldn't be here, but I, I wanted to say that I think that CEC business is a terrible idea, and I hope that there's some way that we can protest against that. Maybe that would be a good job for our city attorney. In studying, this is the document they wanted to read, it's clear that the power plant site and the document regarding it was, and it was certified by the Coastal Commission and designated visitor-serving, and you know all that. and designated visitor-serving, and you know all that. Are the very people, the people who worked on that, changed their minds and are now working against A24? What is it that makes them want to wage war on the wishes of the people? Why do they want the best here? Do they have stock in Vistra? The former mayor, Jamie Irons, worked for PG&E and is now working for Vistra as a consultant. This sounds really improper, doesn't it? All one has to do is look at the financials of the no on best side, and you will see some of the donors, our former city council officials, city officials, pardon me, doesn't say council, who have sat on various boards. You will even see that the new, yet to be seated councilman, Bill LeFey, is a donor. Marleus McPherson, Jamie Irons, and Doug Rogers are a few others. It's just very curious that they would fight something that they helped to create originally. Years and many councils' inputs of putting together this plan, and it all seems very improper. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, city staff, and fellow neighbors. My name is Jeff Echols. I'm a resident of North Morro Bay. I'd like to add a few comments relative to AB 205, specifically the community benefits agreements that are mandated within the law. I want to take exception to the way our city attorney phrased his comments with regard to the community benefits. The city attorney mentioned that the CEC must facilitate a community benefit agreement, which is true, with a local organization, but it doesn't necessarily have to be the local government. You have to understand that this state, or this law was passed statewide. There are 58 counties in the state of California, 484 cities, lots of unincorporated land. So there are areas of the state where a community benefit agreement may have to be entered with a tribe or a labor union, where there is no local entity, local government entity. But, and you can find this in the bottom of page 16 in our board packet that has AB 205, the language of it, but it does specifically mention local government entities. So it would be absolutely, positively absurd to think that the benefit agreement would not be entered into with the local elected representatives of that particular area. So again, the law was written to cover all of the above, but you have to look at the intent of the law, and the law is to represent or to enter an agreement with the representatives of the local citizens. And in this case, it would be the elected representatives, the city council. Thank you.
Betty Winholz, I did ask you to answer about seven questions earlier for me during this presentation. They've kind of boiled down to just a couple of questions, and the main one has to do with the amendment or the master plan. And my understanding is, from what I heard, that the EIR has to cover both the amendment and the CDP. And so I would just like a yes or no that if that's true, how that fits, how the EIR fits with the master plan. And then related to that, staff said that they would be making recommendations regarding the CDP. Will staff also be making a recommendation regarding the amendment? That we should or should not adopt the amendment? And then, you know, kudos to Ms. Rachel Wilson for her research on the air study, because it all comes back to that science thing we keep talking about, and in that science is the assumptions that are being made. And so in light of, and this is my third and last question, that the CEC takes over if it's 205, we also know that the CCC has to grant the CDP. So does the CEC really have the final say, or does the Coastal Commission, because they have to issue the permit? And so my thought, my understanding has been that the CCC will be the final say, but I'd like clarification from the city attorney that that is true. And of course, what, this is a comment, not a statement, I mean, a question, but what was said by Ms. Settey about the health and safety, isn't that the basis for evaluating whether or not a project matches our LCP? And so it's always about our health and safety. And so I think that that should hold, should be upfront, not at the end of the CDP, but that it should be up. If we're passing an amendment that changes our land use, isn't that a point at which you also have to evaluate safety and health? I think that's it.
Thank you all so very much. It's been so educational. I super appreciate being here and being new at this and engaging. And I had a question, a simple question. How will you be inviting public input?
Well, we'll answer that question later. They won't answer it for you now.
Oh, they can't answer that for me now?
Nope.
Okay. And my only other question was, you talked a lot about economic benefits. There's a lot of talk, but I didn't hear about any what, could you tell me one economic benefit of this project? Could somebody tell me one benefit of it?
We'll respond after public comment.
Okay. And the only other comment I wanted to make is the distance to the closest residence or the closest receptor. What about the birds and the animals that are living in the ground and around the area? They're closer than that trailer. Thank you.
Thank you. We have four minutes left, and we will not be able to answer very many of these questions because we will be out of time, so.
Okay, I'll make it fast. This is Margaret Carmen, and I want to say thank you, thank you for all the reports. I just want to say something about the fire report. The big elephant in the room, which I consider the rock, the elephant, there's hundreds and hundreds of people, they don't live at the rock, but Rachel's already done a wonderful presentation for us where she had the timeline. It took an hour and a half for her to leave the parking lot during a kite festival. So that's, you know, that eight-hour limit could be reached, or certainly six hours. So I want to throw that out, that when we're talking about the nearest resident, the nearest residence is at rock with all those people. And I've said this before, there was a meeting out with Vistra at Del Mar, and they were, when they were talking about a fire, somebody said, "I did." I said, "Well, how are you catching all the water that you're using to put this fire out?" And I want to say they probably were talking about an hour-long fire, an eight-hour fire, and what about if they go for two, two weeks, and that water is going into estuary? And again, thank you for all your reports and all.
Anyone else? AG Pierre, are there any raised hands in the queue?
Hi, Mayor Wickson. There are no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to council. Mr. Newmeyer, in one minute, can you answer Ms. Winholz's question about the CCC and the CEC final?
Yes, in one minute, maybe cover a few here. So Ms. Winholz is correct, for a best to be approved under AB 205, there needs to be two agencies that certify it. So the CEC could approve a permit, and then if the CDP is denied by the Coastal Commission, the project does not go forward. They need both of them. I appreciate the comment by Mr. Echols on interpreting AB 205 as the intent should be, that if there is local government, that that CBA, Community Benefit Agreement, should be with local government. CEC has not issued any permits yet, so I think that would be a good argument to make, going to having the city attorney and staff, if it was council's decision in the future, if there was a CEC process to advocate for the position, if the council were to take one, that they don't want a best approved by the CEC, then absolutely, the city attorney would be available to advocate for that, and I would talk with staff about that. Likewise, if in the future it goes to the CEC and the council said, "We want to support the CEC issuing the permit," then of course, city attorney and the rest of the staff would go ahead and pursue that. So, and then last question was that there was a comment on when AB 205, the language itself says that an application is sent to the city, and we weigh in on, you know, whether we think it's consistent with local law. That was mentioned in the report, that in the beginning of the process, the CEC, when an applicant, before an application's received, is asked to weigh in, the developer has to do that. So that is our input opportunity at the beginning.
Thank you, Mr. Newmeyer. Mr. Singwell?
So I can respond to a couple of Ms. Winholz's questions. There was a question about whether or not the EIR must include the, or analyze the LCP amendment and the CDP. So the EIR would analyze the foreseeable impacts of the LCP amendment and the development of the best project. And in that second phase of the process, you know, if the LCP amendment is approved, and the city then proceeds to process the CDP application, it would most likely be found consistent with that EIR that would have been certified with the approval of the master plan, again, if it were approved. There's also a question regarding whether staff would be making a recommendation on the LCP amendment, and yes, staff would make a recommendation to council, to Planning Commission first and then council on the LCP amendment. Another question regarding whether the LCP amendment includes consideration of health and safety impacts, and absolutely, that would be one of the required findings and part of the review for the LCP amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Singwell. I appreciate that. It was a very thorough, long, hour-and-a-half presentation. Thank you. I know it was a lot of work for staff to put all this together. Thank you both for that, Mr. Newmeyer. To be continued. There's going to be more of this, and I appreciate that at the council meetings, for those of you who are looking for some of these answers, the staff does provide updates on this on a regular basis. So as the dates and times change, our timeline, someone asked about the timeline, that was an estimate, you shared that earlier. It will be posted when the meetings start coming, when it's going to Planning Commission, and we'll report it out at the council meetings. As long as it's quick, it's 9:30.
I wanted to ask Chief McCrayne if he, if you could quickly tell us about that wind rose thing in the Morro Bay.
Yeah, happy to answer that. So I spoke to this a little bit. This report does look at the atmospheric conditions in the area, but it uses modeling that makes it worst-case scenario. So even though our natural winds might go a certain direction, for the modeling, it changed those to try to make sure the wind was blowing at the closest residents, concentrating all the smoke directly there to try to get the highest readings possible. Other evaluations, looking at evacuation distances, you know, firefighting tactics, things like that, would absolutely take into account the actual wind rose readings and meteorological conditions here in Morro Bay to determine that. That's not what the purpose of this one study was for. This one study was to determine, how can we make it the highest concentration of chemicals at this residence and determine what that is to see how far that threat spreads?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you all. Thank you, everyone, for your comments tonight. With that, we are adjourned.